Oh, did we bring out the agendas?
No, do you have anything to hand out tonight?
No, the chief does, not me. Um, who did I give the agendas to?
You had them.
No, I made copies and then I thought somebody took them. Did I take them out?
No. You made copies.
No, I made copies for you and I made copies for Bill, for the chief.
Yes, there's a copy for me.
Okay.
That's all I care about.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion so carried. Will everybody stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Um, I guess I didn't put on the agenda to accept the agenda. So if everybody wants to look, the purpose of tonight's meeting is a special meeting just for the purposes of discussing a lot of activity that's going on in the police department and to get the chief's thinking to be presented to the board in terms of what he thinks some of the options are and for then the board to ruminate and take action next week possibly or whenever we should decide to. So that's the only thing I have on the agenda for tonight. Could I have a motion to accept the agenda?
So I'm over.
Do you have a second?
I have one topic for discussion. Is there or is there not a joint meeting of the town and village? It was in the newspaper today.
Um, I don't know for sure as of yet and so I guess a decision will be made tomorrow. So for the purposes of the agenda, we are here to talk about the police.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to accept the agenda? I mean unless you want to put on the joint town village on the agenda to talk about.
I just, yeah, it was because it was in the newspaper today, I just wasn't sure if it was on or off.
That's because it was noticed and I hadn't canceled it even though Jason and I had talked about it and I was waiting for the feedback from the board members and as always, there's a lot of feedback and so I'm not sure if the decision hadn't been made. But if you want to put it on the agenda and talk about it, we could do it or my preference is to keep it to the police meeting and go from there.
Well, I think you've answered the question, so I don't think we need to add it.
Okay, thanks. So do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion so carried. Public input? Anybody have any desire to say anything? Sure? Okay. But back then, what I'd like to do is invite the chief Schneider up and I'd like to invite Bill Walens, our labor attorney, to come to the table so we can listen to the presentation and if you just want to, bring your chair over here.
Yeah, bring it.
Come over and sit next to.
Be comfortable.
In fact, Bill, if you want to run the meeting, you can.
Thanks.
Okay. I just want to start by saying the reason for this meeting is that many of you know the lieutenant retired and I would like to take this moment to publicly thank the lieutenant for his years of services to the town of New Paltz. Steve Ozerchuk served how many years?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five years for the town of New Paltz and I think, you know, we owe him debt of gratitude for his work and would like to say thank you very much. So Steve is leaving and then Gary Thompson, who's also been an officer for how long with the department?
He's been with us for nineteen years.
Okay. For nineteen years is going out on disability. And then there are other changes that are taking place within the police department and actually even more, the chief's going to make a presentation tonight, but there's even more changes that have happened today. So we're sort of in a flux right now in terms of staffing within the police department and so the purpose for tonight is for the chief to present some different alternatives in terms of how to staff the police department and the cost implications to the town board so we can make some decisions going forward. I am not expecting to take any action tonight. It's really more for the chief to update us, to give us some of his opinions, for the board to ask questions, for our labor attorney to advise us on questions that we might have and then, you know, we can, for the moment, the tentative agenda I sent out to the board yesterday for next Thursday, the police structure budget is on the agenda for next Thursday. So if people feel comfortable after tonight to take action next week, we could do that. But tonight is really, for my purposes, really more a informational meeting to hear the things that the chief has to say and for us to ask questions and possibly if you want to see other alternatives, to ask the chief to go ahead and create those other alternatives for us to discuss. So with that, I will turn the meeting over to the chief and it's yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to come in here and speak with everybody. The reason why I have new handouts to hand out today is because since the preparation of the last paperwork that was going to be distributed by the supervisor, we had to hold off on that because there has been some change over the last few days. We are probably in, we're probably in the midst of the biggest turnover at one time we've had in a long time.
Um, well, I think everybody has at this point, everybody, yeah, I think we tried to get rid of all the documents I've been handing out for a while.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you might want to repeat that.
Yeah. We're right now, we are in the midst of the biggest turnover we've probably had in a short period of time. At this point with the lieutenant retiring, we had a sergeant recently retire, we had an officer leave to go to another police department, another officer just retired as of effective this weekend and there may be potentially another one leaving also with going to another agency, but that one has not been confirmed yet. But with all these changes, we're down in personnel. We also have a dispatcher, Charlie Stratton, who's been with us for about nineteen years as well. He's going to be retiring at the end of this month. So we have a bunch of change in salaries, which is a good thing because that with all this turnover, it takes away top salary officers with the years of service to bringing in some new salaries at the beginning rate. So with that being said, with, I prepared a preliminary budget that I'm prepared to sit down with the board and our police commission to go over, but with what I'm looking at along with some cutbacks in other items I can control in the budget, we're pretty much looking at $113,000 decrease in our budget, leaving our staff the way it is today as far as with the manpower, the numbers that have been approved in this year's budget. And that's just with the changeover. Keeping in mind that all these backfilling positions, the time that it's going to take to put new officers on is going to take a longer period of time. So with that and nobody being paid during this time, there's going to be also a lot of savings for the town that they should consider as well during this time.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
I noticed Luch's name is not on here, is he?
I removed all the sergeants' names.
Okay.
On this, just at this point because of the fact of we may, we're hoping to replace the lieutenant's position. So if I put, I have the lieutenant slot written down, I removed the sergeant names so that...
Okay, no, I'm sorry, I just thought, I didn't understand why you had them all blacked out.
You didn't leave.
Yeah, I'm with them, like, wow, you really did lose everybody.
No, no.
Okay, so they are not blacked out because they left or blacked out because of...
Correct.
Future plans, okay.
As you may know, I know the commission I made aware as well as the supervisor, meeting a second command in the station for this middle time that we're in, Detective Sergeant Lucchese was appointed to be second commander of the department. So that's what's taking place now. Doesn't change anything except he's now up to his ears because he's also doing detective work as well as handling a lot of the lieutenant's duties at this point. So what I had prepared, because there's been a lot of discussion over the possibility of restructuring and what we would or potentially do or not do, I've been in contact with the labor attorney, Bill Walens. We discussed different options. I know the union has given some input of what they'd like to potentially say. And so one of the issues that came out of it was, you know, whether we would have a lieutenant or if we would have an administrative sergeant. And we've talked about the pros and the cons, the difference of salary, you know, so do you all have a sheet like this?
Well, everybody got that sheet a while ago, but I thought you just told me not to, and I just made copies just in case.
What's changing in this one is that...
Okay, well, let me just, just let me double check for a second because everybody did get that sheet.
Okay.
I made more copies just in case nobody brought them, but then I thought you told me you didn't want me to hand...
Well, the...
Would you like me to hand them out again?
Hand them out because you know what that's going to do? That's going to show us...
Nobody brought it, I'm sure. I don't know if anybody brought it, but if they did, I have copies.
Sitting on my kitchen counter.
Okay, so I made copies just in case, so, but then she told me he had new copies of new stuff, so I, does everybody?
Hang up.
Okay, so...
This is a demonstration.
So it's impossible for us to get a copy?
Yes, it's right here. I have extra copies right here and there were more copies that the chief made of, I made more copies of that for the public, so you can hand, spread, hand those out too. Okay?
Basically, with that sheet, although the salaries will change based on the new, Gary Thompson retiring and some of the change, the price, the cost has dropped, but this is a summary of...
Apples to apples.
Yes, yes. We are comparing what it would be with a lieutenant compared to what it would be with an administrative sergeant. And there was different talk about salaries with, and you'll see there's three different differentials for an administrative sergeant and that was just again as something to review as the potential of if there was a $2,500 increase, a $3,500 increase, or a $5,000 increase. There's also written down here, you have the amount of per hour that that person would make compared to the lieutenant. It's a difference of anywhere from four dollars, three, four dollars to three dollars in that ballpark. If they are, the administrative sergeant would receive overtime for everything that's worked over the forty hours where the lieutenant does not get any overtime. So there's, there's a lot of issues when you look at any savings that you may see with the salary between a lieutenant and a staff sergeant, administrative sergeant, but then you have to look at the other issue, which one is overtime. Most of the sergeants average about 225 hours in overtime.
So that's not, that's not shown on here, is it?
That's not shown on here, no.
So the differential is just a bump for additional responsibility?
Correct.
Okay.
If you look at the bottom, it'll say OT hours needed to reach the lieutenant's salary.
Correct.
At the lowest differential, it would be 216 hours. At the 3,500 differential, it would be at 194 hours and if they were at a $5,000 differential, you're talking 162 hours. So if, depending on what they receive at any of these, you're either going to be paying the same as a lieutenant or more than what you would pay a lieutenant. And then you have the ability to have second in command of the department that is not part of the union. Being part of the union obviously creates a lot of issues with disciplinary, internal investigations, anything of such of running from an administrative point. Even if I'm out of town, the staff sergeant would be in charge of the department. His hands are really tied because he's dealing with the same union he's a member of. So having a lieutenant, having two administrators of the agency overseeing the department that are not members of the union is the way it should be run and the proper way for the smoothest transition. I believe, Phil, you could maybe give a little feedback on that. I know we discussed that at length. Any input on your opinion?
Well, the one thing, I mean, again, it's obviously for the board, there's, if you keep the current structure with the tenant, you've got administratively more flexibility as far as assignments, as far as deployment, I think things of that sort. If the administrative sergeant is the way the board decides to go, then all terms and conditions of employment, work schedules, things like that need to be negotiated with the union. Without being outside, having a, the PVA, obviously then the board sets the terms and conditions of employment, the board will set the salary, the board would retain or make sure that the contract would retain the flexibility of assigning, of when the discretion went to assign. So that would all be left obviously to the discretion of the administration. Also, from my experience, I mean, there is an issue in many police agencies where you have employees having investigation and disciplinary authority over, having to investigate employees within their own bargaining unit. I was just in another town yesterday where the head of the internal affairs, much larger, they have like 105 officers, but a much larger police department and again, a similar structure where the internal affairs officer is not in the regular PVA. So he calls in members and so Q and A them, give them question and answers, and it's a much higher level of authority than having someone within the bargaining unit. But that's, that's an operational concern that the board may want to, you know, take into account.
As Bill indicated about the scheduling issue, with the lieutenant now, as myself, when there's an event going on, I'll give an example of Sunday's event for the 125th anniversary for the village, there was an event going on, I work Sunday. If the lieutenant was here, he would have been working Sunday. When we have events on weekends, he'll work. If there's certain things going on at night, he's scheduled and he'll rotate his schedule to come in and work a detail for nighttime when we're doing street sweeps and things of that nature. If you have administrative sergeant, then you don't have that flexibility because it has to be negotiated to be able to change. As it is now, if we move a union member, you usually see a grievance come forward that we didn't, they put a stipulation into effect, things of that nature. So when you have a lieutenant, that's not part of the labor contract, you have the ability to bounce around and do whatever hours that are needed for the interest of the town and the department.
If I can just understand one thing real quick, looking at what you had put together for the administrative sergeant slot, where if you show the 5,000 differential, the bottom line is 1,266.6, but because of some changes that have happened in between when you put this together a few weeks ago and now that, keeping everybody the same for the moment, you're showing, you're showing 1.256.
Correct.
So in other words, were you showing a little bit of a savings between the, keeping the lieutenant or doing administrative sergeant? Now, because of even some more changes that happened, keeping everything status has even come below the cost of if we had moved to administrative sergeant.
Correct, but that would, that would change the numbers on all of it.
Okay.
It would change the numbers at the top for the structure as it is now with lieutenant as well as the bottom numbers if we made an administrative sergeant.
No, I understand that the old numbers will change, but I'm just saying, just from when you first went through the exercise of giving us a budget with lieutenant and giving us a budget without a lieutenant, in that time because of more retirements that have taken place, it's come down even more.
Correct, yes.
So that's, so even though everything will come down a little bit, we're still already below where we were when you started this exercise.
Correct, yes.
Does your 2012 personnel services list include the longevity pay?
Yes.
That's why they're different.
Yes, and then you see the decrease and then you'll see at the last row is what the number would be with longevity.
Right. So the savings is the difference between 1372 and the 1287 then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's in salaries. Then through the, my proposed budget that I'm putting forward, there's other decreases that I have in there that again, so far at this point, I have a preliminary budget that's 113,000 less.
Well, Kevin, you just asked if the differential was between 1372 and 1287?
Yes, because it includes, column one includes the longevity and then the total at the end includes the longevity, so you're comparing column one to column four to get your total.
No, understand, but if I'm correct, column one is the 212, column four is 213.
Correct.
But it's still keeping all of the positions, keeping the police department intact with lieutenant, with the same amount of sergeants.
Right.
So it's not, where this chart here that I gave you, the one that's in your left hand, this one shows, was originally a comparison of keeping a lieutenant...
Right, I see that.
Or getting rid of lieutenant and having administrative sergeant. And here, what we're looking at is keeping the police department intact but still showing a decrease because of what I've learned is the term called shrinkage and because we're...
It's a new term you learned.
It's a new term, I just learned.
You learned a new term last night, too, I would go off.
Yeah, I did learn a new term and it's almost similar in some ways, you could actually...
There is corresponding relationship.
There is a corresponding relationship between shrinkage of last night, shrinkage of today, but what you learn when you go into NIMs training. But, so anyway, so yeah, but this is so, it's 212, 213, we already have a decrease of, well, close to $100,000 just by the shrinkage and you're expecting to have even more of a savings because of some changes that have happened as of today?
Yes, if the change that I've learned today goes through, there'd probably be a difference of maybe another 15,000 even potentially based on that person's salary compared to a new officer coming in.
So it'll probably go down to like 1275.
So, I mean, I think that we can see the savings for this year, but we still are talking about 22 full-time officers and I had thought there would be some shrinkage in the overall number of officers and I see we're still at 22.
Well, my, this is my hope and belief where we should be. I understand budget issues and budget concerns and I understand that the board will be looking for other options. Understand that with the changeover that we have experienced, we're going to be approximately four officers down. With the way the civil service list is and being able to fill these positions, it's not going to be done overnight. We change, make the change, I would like to look, to put the lieutenant in place so that operations can continue. I'm going to backfill with part timers the best I can at this point as we look at the list, look at who's available. I do not imagine going back to 22 before the first of the year. So as we go through budget talk, that will come out because those bodies are not going to be replaced immediately. There is canvassing that has to be done, there's another list that's going to be coming out in November, or tests coming out in November. There's going to be a time period before we could get back to 22 anyway. Between now and then, we're going to have a budget time. So during budget time, it's going to see what the board wants, what our community's looking for in the police department and what we sit down with and talk about from the police commission and decide what direction we're going to go into.
So I, I thought we had had some talk in the past about perhaps not needing four sergeants and two detective sergeants.
We have two detectives, one detective sergeant.
Well, we have one, oh, we have one detective sergeant and one detective.
Correct.
And four sergeants. So I guess what I'm looking for is, is it possible that one of these sergeant slots, since they have no names attached, could be eliminated and you would still feel that you could accomplish the public safety?
The way it is right now with the contract where it spells out the four sergeants working tours, and we had this discussion with the labor attorney as well as the supervisor, at this time, the contract says four sergeants with their hours. What I had spoken about to the board, also with Jeff and Bill, I agree that we need to put some type of plan in action and that is negotiations number one to see what type of a work schedule we can make with three sergeants compared to four. And if we could come to an agreement on that and have a schedule that'll work for the department, the community, the town board, then we negotiate it. There's going to be more retirements in the near future as it pertains to sergeants. Now's the time for us to begin that dialogue with the PVA and the union to try to come up with a work schedule.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand is we know that the contract has expired and we are working with our labor attorney and PVA to come up with a new one. So these four slots exist under the contract that is being renegotiated but has expired.
Well, just so you know, negotiations haven't started.
They have not started.
No, nothing has started at all in the slightest. And there's been no direction from the board relative to any negotiations. The only thing that has started is a conversation with, because of all the shrinkage and because of lieutenant retiring, myself and Bill meeting with the labor, the union representative to sort of say, there's an opportunity now for us to try to make some changes and what are you looking for? So we sort of know what you're looking for and then conversations with the chief, what are you looking for so we know what everybody's, what everybody wants and then at a certain point, the board will decide how they want to negotiate.
Okay, well, maybe that's what we should, I mean, I think that should be a key part of our discussion tonight.
Well, I'm going to say...
So you have some direction.
I will give you, I might not give you direction, I will just give you information that I've gathered so you know what we're up against, but I wanted to let the chief have his opportunity to talk and then I can add in a few things, you know, so maybe...
Bill wants to say something?
No, no, I'm listening, no, 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 no. I was just going to concur, we have not started, we, we had not started negotiations really with any union. We have sat down with two of the unions. We sat down with the Teamsters.
Actually, yeah, right.
And we sat down with the town hall employees as a preliminary meeting, basically stating both, both unions that because of the town still not having the audit reports and knowing what the town's fiscal condition is, that we were not prepared to commence negotiations until the town had a, the town board had a firm numbers or the audit numbers came in and both of those unions kind of, they said they understood and so we have not started negotiations of those. I think, Jeff, you were at the one meeting with the Teamsters.
Teamster, the highway.
Yeah, a very similar meeting, probably a month later with the, with the UPSU represent in the town hall where we had the same type of discussion with, with that group, essentially saying that the audit reports haven't come in, Mr. Waiting for, I think, the state comptroller's audit and at that time, when the board had a firmer grasp of the current year-end numbers from last year, that the board would give us, you know, direction on how to proceed. But negotiations haven't started because we know how it ended last year, it's difficult to discuss dollars, you know, going, going forward. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay, I mean, but, but we knew when we did last year's budget, which was kind of a fiasco, that we're not expecting golden parachute. Whatever the results are from this audit, we're not expecting new money to appear.
Well, I think, well, I think what was very clear in those meetings with the unions was a pretty big reality check about the fact that it was my personal belief from my off the record conversation with the comptroller and having the annual report, you know, the outside auditor doing the annual report for the past six months, which he's been doing and giving feedback, which I've been reporting back to the board, that it's, I've been very clear to the unions that I don't think there's a lot of money in the town's budget to negotiate any kind of really wonderful contracts going forward without worrying about losing personnel. And so I think I've painted a pretty realistic opinion of what I think the town's budget is and I think they all sort of understand going forward that, you know, that we're going to have to have serious conversations and, you know, I mean, what I've made sort of really clear to them was that, you know, we're all in this together and that, you know, times are not good and our budgets are not good and people are really hurting and we also have a tax cap and we're going to have to figure out a way to work together and try to figure out how to provide the services for the community that we need, but understand that there's not a lot of money there. And so it was really just a sort of like, hi, you know, I'm here, things are bad, we'll talk to you when we're ready. And that's been pretty much the extent of the conversation.
I mean, that, that certainly makes some sense, but when we're looking at our first opportunity in a long time to be proactive, you know, we see new officer in here three times, so there is an opportunity for attrition here not to fill those positions.
And I, and I think the big thing, and Bill, you know, I thought I remember and Kitty, you were in on these conversations too, but when we, which is amazing with all my time sitting on this board, I don't think I've ever sat with, us with an active contract for more than a few months with the police.
With, with what contract?
With the police.
An active.
I don't think, I don't think we've had an actual active.
They're always expiring.
I think we've always been out of contract and I thought we had the conversation that the sergeant spots were listed in there as times and you've given us an example of another area that is listing the shifts. It wasn't dictating, none of our contracts have ever had manpower requirements and I, we had that conversation a few years ago.
I think the conversation that we may, we had, Jeff, was whether there was an overall complement clause in the contract.
Right.
And there's no overall complement. In other words, there's nothing in there that says how many overall number of police officers, I think it was more at the bottom level.
Okay.
I think the dialogue was based on the overall complement and there is nothing in that requires a certain number of them, I'm going to say patrol, full-time patrol officers.
Right.
And right now, and the chief would know better than I would, you do have a supplemental, you do use part timers here. you do use part-timers here.
Yes, we're, we're all, we need to get more.
And their schedule, and how, and how, how that works.
Right, 'cause I, I think, and to what Kitty's saying is, what our bigger problem is, and Joe and I have had this conversation, it's not where we are today, it's where we are ten years from now. And if you, let's just say, how many retirees are we going to have potentially? How many people retirees this year?
This year, I believe we have-
Three?
Five.
Five?
Yeah.
So if we have five, not leaving just retirees.
I think four retirees and one left, and the second one potentially.
So each, so each one of those four retirees, you're looking at about, I'm, I'm actually lowballing now, but fifteen thousand, so there's sixty thousand dollars right there, that we're going to be paying out just in medical, and let's assume medical's been going up at a rate of about ten percent a year, so now you're up to seventy thousand dollars already. So what I was wondering, and Kitty, I hear what you're saying, so, I mean, it's a much bigger conversation, is what do we want the police force to look like?
So, well, we're not playing, we're not paying those salaries that are more mature, we are, and those benefits don't appear in this part of our budget.
Correct.
And, but, but we will find them in other parts of our budget.
In the benefit section of our budget.
So it makes it a little bit, you know, the onus is on us to factor that extra cost of retiring officers-
Yes, I understand.
Into this bottom line.
So I think what is, and I do, I totally understand what Joe's doing here, and what you do here, because it is a reduction, I totally agree, I'm, you know, I'm not going to debate that, is, if we want the department to look the same, and I, I don't need an answer now, but where we do have new officer, new officer, let's just pretend those are forty hours each, so there's eighty hours, and, and don't answer it now, but, you know, is it possible to go out and get four part-time officers to fill those? Like, is that, and it's okay what we're doing, we'd be keeping the same look and the same heads-on street, but it does bring a whole different management headache into the mix.
See, the issue we have with part-time officers is, they have full-time jobs, they have responsibilities, summertime, they're on vacation from their full-time jobs with their families away.
Or they want to be full-time.
Perfect example is, or they want to be full-time, and they're the good ones that you can get a lot of hours at, out of, until they find that full-time job. And what we're dealing with right now, we have a race coming up this weekend, we're paying overtime, because part-timers are not available, it's summertime, they're on vacation. So, and we have, we have one that's in military right now, he's away in military, we have another one that's going into military, and will be away for three months. We have to interview to hire some more, there's a training period that comes with it. So when you deal, that's why a lot of agencies, bigger agencies, go away from having part-timers and put the extra full-timers on. But I understand the dynamics and what we're dealing with.
There's also, from a civil service point of view, a limit on the number of hours that a part-time employee can work.
And I, totally, that's why I was just saying, so for every one head, you potentially, we need almost two and a half.
Right, so it matters what you have, the, is there this bucket, so to speak, of, of part-timers who are, can give you the hours, and, because, like I said, there is a civil service limitation on the number of hours that a particular part-timer can work on a regular basis.
Right. And, and I, that's what I'm saying, so, and I'm going to guess then, for one full-time, you probably need two and a half part-time. Is that about, is that close, probably?
Yeah, it all depends on the person.
What, what is that, civil service?
Generally, they cannot work more than twenty hours a week, more than half-time on a regular basis. Civil service puts a, a limit on that, and then they, you have to, they will not certify. Yeah, so they, and that's in the, essentially, civil service law in the county, and that's a county oversight.
And is it just the police department?
No, 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 no.
It's every part-timer?
Everyone, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's a general limitation-
Okay.
On the employment for part-time competitive class civil service employees as police officers.
Basically, what I'm, I'm looking for-
And I'm sorry, one last one, Joe, I know you look, but, and we also are down, I think we're down two full-time in the last three years?
Officers?
I mean, yeah, from what you have. What are we down?
Now, with people that-
No, not even leaving, just actual count, that, like, what we, what you were budgeting for.
We started with twenty-two.
Not including you?
No, counting myself. Counting myself, we have twenty-two right now. We had twenty-three last year, we're down to twenty-two, and I know this conversation, I want to go back to twenty-one. What, well, my thought is, we know what we are right now, down on the top, and operations is very difficult to do right now. What I'd like to do, and first of all, we have to understand the civil service, the canvassing process and everything, we're not going to be able to add on and be back to full staff quite within the next several months, because of the, the process. I don't even know if there are certified people on the county list at this point, that have the academy. And if they don't, and they're the ones that you have to pick from, there's a whole training process, which can take anywhere from three to six months, and then some. So when you're looking at the whole picture, you know, if we can at least keep our operations going properly by replacing the lieutenant's position, and the sergeants, as it stands now, gives us opportunity to negotiate as we go through the budget process, you may get outpour from our community that says, you know what, we want to keep the department the way it is, or you may get an outcry saying that we want to go to twenty officers.
But what I'm trying to understand, and this is why we needed Bill here tonight, is if we fill all four sergeant positions that are here, which I gather we must do under our current expired contract?
Well, you say expired, the terms continue until, by, by state law, until a new contract is negotiated.
Okay, so we're operating under-
The, the expired contract will just still, in fact, by, by state law.
Okay, so if we fill all four of these sergeant positions now, and then go into negotiations and say, we don't want four sergeants anymore, are we likely to be grieved for having filled these positions, and then-
Be grieved, you say grieved?
Grieved by-
No, no, obviously, if we negotiate a new contract that doesn't, that has different terms and conditions of employment relative to the number of sergeants, there's nothing, there's nothing to really grieve. In other words, it's a, you know, there are different negotiating strategies that we can talk about, obviously, I think, in a different, in a different setting, but they would only grieve if they violate the contract. If you negotiate a different provision with a different staffing level and different terms and conditions of employment, and the only, then there's nothing, there was, really, no basis to grieve.
But, but Kenny, if I can jump in for a second, what, in the conversations with the union, understand, the chief is sort of saying he would like to have a lieutenant, because he believes that the proper protocol and operations need a lieutenant, okay? Obviously, from the union's perspective, they want to see more officers on the ground, and if it becomes a battle between management and folk boots on the ground, they want, they don't want the lieutenant. What has been said, okay, and again, the board can choose how they want to act, you just need to understand the bigger picture, they have said that if we try to put in a lieutenant, for the moment, the consideration of looking at a lieutenant and getting rid of a sergeant can create impact arbitration, so before we even get to the point of negotiation, there could be impact arbitration of saying, we're going to take it to the state to see, have the state determine whether or not, if we get rid of a sergeant, it impacts the safety of the department, so-
I don't think, well, it wasn't in the context of the, of the sergeant, and there is, even though you have a right, let's say, to reduce, or, as some of the discussion is, not fill a patrol officer, there are impact issues that the union can demand, even though they can't say you need to have so many patrol officers, they can demand to negotiate the impact of your reduction, meaning, is it, creates safety issues? Does it create issues of inability to get time off, and, uh, things, things like that. So those are issues that could be brought to the table by the, you know, by, by the union to demand to negotiate those aspects that they may believe have an impact based upon a reduction of police patrol officers on the street. But that's, 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 again, something they can do under the tail of law. And that's outside the grievance procedure, that's a negotiation obligation.
Now, just, if I remember correctly, right now, with, with the union's perspective, and the existing contract we're operating under, which calls for four sergeants, the possibility of play, which is outside, I think, the spectrum of the contract, is a detective sergeant, right? From the perspective of that, that's, that is, is not in the contract, I don't remember, I don't think the detective sergeant-
No, it's not. The detective sergeant is mentioned in the contract, but I believe it says if, if, if we have a sergeant, and also, I looked at the cost difference on that, from having a detective sergeant, which I, I feel is important, based on my experience with being a detective, being a detective sergeant, being a lieutenant overseeing the detective division when we went away from having a sergeant, and my ability as lieutenant to oversee the detective division as it is needed, was difficult, between operating the department, overseeing everyday operations, and overseeing the detective division. So we went back to a detective sergeant, when I made chief. Where we are now, if we were to go back to that, where we have two detectives and a lieutenant oversees that, you're looking at a savings of, you see the difference of, the detective salary is sixty-one thousand seven hundred and eleven, a sergeant's salary was sixty-five four twelve. So you're talking just over three thousand dollars. And, and when you look at that, three thousand dollars compared to having a division, it's not, I know people say, well, it's only one person they're supervising, that's not how you look at it. They're operating and supervising the division, so that runs by itself. The detective sergeant approves all the reports, and takes care of all the internal stuff that goes on, and, you know, and that sometimes will come from a patrol person that says, well, they only have one person supervised. Most of the time, a road sergeant supervises two patrol officers. You know, the night one does more officers because of the make of the community.
But I think, and then I'll let you speak, Gene, but just from a perspective of us in a sense, like, right now, there's five sergeants technically.
Correct.
Four are in the contract that were, you know, that have to be negotiated in a sense, so if-
There is no requirement, the, the, the way the contract says is the work schedule for the detective, and, I think it says, in the event there is a detective sergeant.
Correct.
Right. So all I'm just saying is that, in other words, if the union says we want to do impact arbitration on these sergeants, but the board wants to see one quote less sergeant, there is flexibility in the detective sergeant to potentially get rid of a sergeant and not have impact arbitration with the union. I'm not saying that's the answer, by any means, I'm just saying that's an option, in terms of how to move forward in a way to work with the union, work with what you would like, work with what the union would like, work with what the board likes, and try to do it in a way where we're not spending money on fighting legal, you know?
If that difference makes a big difference to this board and to our commission, that would be the sergeant's position at this point, to say, we wouldn't backfill. But again, I always, I would ask you just to look at the dollar amount and, and make a decision on that. And I would, I would, you know, follow what the commission board wants.
But I just think it's important for the board to understand the options that they have, and the cause and effect of every move that we make, in terms of how the union reacts, how you feel, and what the board wants to see. So I'm just, wanted to point that out, that that is a, the detective sergeant slot is the one flexible slot that's not in the contract, and the union has not said they would necessarily do impact arbitration against.
Correct.
I just want to point that out. So again, it's just bringing all of the pieces that are on the table, so the board can then make the decisions of how they want to move forward. Gene, you wanted to say something?
Yeah. So, they, the officers pretty much have a standard eight-hour work deck. I know that you don't get to, if you're doing paperwork, you don't get to, so whether it's eight to four and four to midnight, or seven to three, I don't really care. But can, I, I need to know, like, kind of what you mean by staffing needs? So like, during, because each shift, you, so you have three shifts a day.
Correct.
The police department is twenty-four seven.
Yes.
Okay, so you have three shifts a day that need to be moved. And I'm assuming, even if you were to switch the rotation, that like, the guys who've been there the longest, of course, we know they want to work Monday through Friday, but probably, in your line of work, that doesn't always happen. But even still, they're scheduled probably for forty hours a week, which is within five days. So then you still need three shifts covered on the weekend. So would you please walk me through this? How many are needed on eight to four?
Okay. What we have is, there's a rotation that takes place, because their work schedule is every fifth week, they also have a three-day pass. So they work a five-day week.
Yes, okay. How many bodies do you have on in the morning shift?
We have, there's four B, there's four officers assigned to the day shift.
Four full-timers?
Four full-timers.
Which, Gene, would be the B-line, right?
Okay. Four full-timers, and is that three officers?
Generally, it's minimum of two, depending on rotation, and three usually. You'd have three officers.
Okay, but if you-
That doesn't include a sergeant.
So that's two officers, and that's you and the lieutenant?
I'm sorry?
Is that two officers and you and the lieutenant?
No, there's three patrol officers. That would be on a shift, or sometimes two. And basically, we won't go below-
You just said, you just said four.
Well, there's four assigned to that rotation of B-lines.
Okay, two covered seven days.
Right, so they overlap days off, so that we always have minimum of two officers, and sometimes you'll have a max of three officers, depending on how the rotation falls and to play with their days off.
Okay, what about four to twelve?
Three to eleven, this is the exact same thing.
Three to eleven.
Four assigned to two?
Four assigned. We used to have five, but that's been changed.
Okay.
And, and I'm sorry, the D-line, you don't have anymore, right?
The D-line, we still do, but that's being moved, that's going to be moved, and that's going to go into the A-line tour.
All right, so what about your overnight?
The overnight, we have, well, we, when we had the D-line, but we're going to have four in that shift also, plus we have the K-nine.
Four assigned to how many slots, chief?
Four for the A-line, the night tour. And again, every shift, no matter which shift it is, there's four officers that are assigned to keep a maximum of two people working the tour.
Okay, so it's the same with that last shift, four assigned to two spots working that night?
Yes, two minimum.
Two minimum, right.
Two minimum. And then we have the K-nine officer, who's assigned to just A-lines on the busy nights.
Six in a day.
So he will be the additional officer for the night tour.
Okay, so there's one more then on the night tour.
So there's one on the work.
Just on the busy nights, yes.
So Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or?
Yes, yeah. He actually works Sunday night also, I think, into Monday.
Because he gets like a five-day?
Yeah.
Five days in a row, then eight? Then how are the sergeants assigned?
The sergeants, they work-
I'm sorry, Gene. Is that, Gene, are you asking for sergeants next, or not?
Supervisory coverage, we used to have three sergeants, and the reason why we went to four sergeants was because of liability reasons. Supervision is an important thing to have when you're getting sued over something that occurs when no supervisor's working. That's why, I believe it was in the early nineties, we went from three sergeants to four. The sergeants work, two of them work Bs and Cs rotation. One of them works a B-C rotation with every Saturday as a D-line, which is a eight at night to four in the morning. And then we have one sergeant that's assigned to the night tour, which works Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday through Friday, which, no, Tuesday through Saturday, which gives him working Monday night through Friday night. Then the D-line sergeant for that one night will do that Saturday night overnight for the busy times.
So you have a sergeant on each shift?
Yes.
Working, correct.
Now, the only, with four sergeants, you cannot make it where they actually, we actually have twenty-four-seven coverage, because you actually need a fifth sergeant to accomplish that. So with, working with what we have, that's why we have that, what they call the shift that is kind of messed up, because you throw in a D-line for that sergeant every week. So every Saturday, no matter if he's working days or afternoons, every Saturday, he always works an overnight.
Is that overtime?
No, no, that's historic. So then we do not have any supervisory coverage from, unless there's something going on, from four o'clock in the morning on Sunday morning, Saturday night to Sunday morning, through seven o'clock, the B-line sergeant comes in, and Sunday night, we do not have a sergeant that works.
So pretty much Sunday?
Yeah, Sunday, you have a little vacancy between four and seven, and then Sunday night into Monday, there's no supervisor.
Four in the morning until seven in the morning?
No.
Four in the afternoon?
Eleven at night to seven in the morning.
Eleven to seven.
Yes, correct.
So what happens if you need a supervisor?
Yeah, they follow you?
Well, there's, sometimes there's overtime, depending on what it is. Sometimes I've worked night tours, the lieutenants worked night tours, the union doesn't like when we do.
If there's an incident.
Because they say we're taking their overtime. But depending on circumstances, because there are times where a sergeant's not available, so that's what the lieutenant or myself do, we fluctuate into a tour or into a, a time period where we need a supervisor, but there's nobody available.
But isn't that your role?
It's our role, but we also have to be careful not to take away a, a union member's overtime, because we're taking their job description, or working for their job description.
But it, but you said if there's no sergeant available.
Yes.
So someone below a sergeant couldn't fulfill the role, and it would have to be- So someone below a sergeant couldn't fulfill the role, and it would have to be one of you two.
We do, but we also put an officer, an OIC officer in charge. The senior officer of a shift will usually be the one in charge of that tour until a supervisor comes in. But again, if there's something going on that is-
Big.
Big, or an event, or just, you know, weekends, we don't, we don't like to work without supervisory coverage on weekends. So that's why you'll see me sometimes a Saturday night, you know, working, because we don't have coverage, and we'll come in and we'll work the tour.
Okay.
Now, do we pay when you assign someone officer in charge, or is it informal?
No, it's informal. However, there's been talk about wanting OIC pay, but it's never been negotiated yet.
In past contracts, Jeff, they have been demands on the table, my recollection, for OIC pay or differential, and we've resisted it at the bargaining table, and there's no provision, my recollection, currently.
That's correct.
But that is something that has been a subject of bargaining in the, in the past.
Chief, when you do the math on these shifts, if you're assigning two people to work eight-hour shifts, that's sixteen hours a day, right?
Correct.
Times seven days, then you divide that by four people assigned, it's twenty, it's an average of twenty-eight hours per person per week. So obviously it gets bumped up because there's vacation and things like that, right?
Yeah, and there's some overlap and things of that nature.
Okay. And I would imagine that a bulk of your part-time stuff, again, is to cover vacation time.
The overtime?
Part-time.
Oh, yes, yeah. Part-timers, we use for, we, we go to them first anytime there's an opening on a tour, we try to get a part-timer in, and we use them for the extra patrols for weekends.
I just did some quick math, it's fifty-eight weeks of coverage. When you add up your dollar value there.
What are you talking about, for the two shifts?
For forty-four thousand and twenty-two an hour, it's fifty-eight weeks of work. So, most of it's vacation. Twenty-two hundred hours.
Two thousand thirty-one.
Two thousand.
Yeah, we have, at times, tried to operate a tour, assigning only three officers to it, like the B-line, we had three B-lines. And with that happens, that we're constantly filling every time somebody's on vacation or calls in sick, and we're paying more for the overtime. So by filling it with, having each tour with a minimum of four officers assigned to it, based on the rotation, we find that there's less overtime needed, less coverage needed. And also, it, we were able to use the part-timers on the busy nights. And most of the time, that's when the part-timers are available, more so, because most of them have full-time jobs during the day. So bringing them in on weekends, nights, it's been beneficial for us. So having four officers assigned per tour, so we don't have to use part-timers as much going into week, weekdays and daytime hours, it's worked out better for coverage.
So you're talking about twelve plus one, here is thirteen, right?
Correct.
The last one being the, the-
K-nine.
K-nine, yes.
Yes, we have thirteen control-
And you have fourteen slots that you budget for, and you just demonstrated that you're filling thirteen positions at a minimum.
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, Officer Thompson, who just had retired because he's been off the schedule due to an injury, that is the one that we've kind of left vacant, I'm kind of planning on seeing how we can operate with that not being in effect. And that's with moving the D-line and what have you.
You're trying to hold the budgetary side and salary side down, because there's another side you don't have any control over, right?
Correct.
The other side of the budget.
Correct.
Which is medical benefits and retirement.
Medical benefits and retirement.
So, you know, really, you're in a quandary. You don't have control over a lot, but not all of the retirement benefit expense.
Correct.
I mean, obviously, we, we could come up with maybe an alternative health plan that might be able to save the town some money, which we have some control over. But the retirement part, we all have any control over. And over time, that piece is the one that's going up pretty dramatically, right?
Yes, yes.
Has anybody ever done a projection of what the next five years would look like?
I don't believe so in, in the retirement. I know with the new, the new tier, that members are supposed to contribute a percentage to it, I don't know, six percent or something like that. And I know that's also a union issue that some unions are, I don't know if our union is at this point-
Depends on the wording, there are some court cases on, depends on the wording of the contract.
Right, the contract says that the town will provide, you know, retirement or for retirement, even though the tier says that the member will decide, and I don't, again, I don't think there's anything going on with our, because I know some members are paying a percentage into their retirement, comes out of their pay.
But not, not medical?
Not medical. Right, at this point, there's nothing with medical.
Kevin, there was a report that came out about three years ago called "The Iceberg", and it was, it was some-
The iceberg, you don't mean ahead, it came out from the state controller?
Yeah. And I, I don't remember off the top of my head what the projections were, but they said, this is going to absolutely paralyze those components. So, you know, and unanticipated consequences of early retirement and most of my contracts, which do guarantee full medical.
You really need to look at the next five years to see, like Jeff's point, if you're talking about five people with fifteen thousand, just for medical. That's just this year, I mean, it's got to go up.
We get it, it's a pretty good idea when we do our monthly vouchers.
You read it.
Yeah, I know.
You and I read it.
Look at it at eighteen hundred a month.
The problem with the medical-
In reality, yes.
More twenty thousand.
The problem with the medical-
I've been served a shoe.
Right now, and going to the seminars that I've been going to, the people in the insurance business really have, can't predict what's going to happen in two thousand and fourteen.
Right.
When a lot of the new mandates, if they remain, go into effect, and the brokers that I've been meeting with, and the carriers that I've been meeting with there, because the regulations haven't even been written.
But Bill, they'll find a way to make sure it increases dramatically.
Oh, that's what I mean. It's not, we just don't know how much.
Right.
I know, that's what, that point I'm trying to make is, in following the discussion with respect to medical, we probably, there's a historical of eight, twelve, fifteen, whatever the historical increase has been, but come two thousand and fourteen, that might even spike more. And the consultants just don't know until they actually see the implementation of the changes that will go into effect.
Well, on a bigger issue outside of this, but similar to that in terms of the iceberg ahead, and I'm hoping that Ken Bond, who's our new bond counsel, will come and actually do this presentation, but he was, last week was in Chicago, and he told me he was there at a bar association, and his whole presentation was about how local government is really heading off the cliff because property tax has been the driving focus of how we pay for all our services, and because of so many homes being foreclosed and people not being able to afford their property taxes, that, that secure funnel of money is no longer really there anymore. And so local governments are really going to find themselves in a position of how do you operate going into the future, when all of a sudden property tax is not that stable, you know?
Property tax.
Property tax is no longer stable, you can no longer, it depends on property tax to pay for all of your services, because people are walking away from their home.
Did you see our accessories report? New York State has imposed a new three-point-four percent income tax on property tax sales and rental income, which, yeah. So although there may be the appearance that New York State is reducing taxes-
What bothers me more than-
This is coming in two thousand and thirteen.
It bothers me that members of our community somehow are personally guaranteeing all the losses incurred at the state level. So when they give the money to Wall Street, and Wall Street loses it, and they're underfunded, then they come to us, but I don't remember signing the personal guarantee for that. You? I don't remember that. And that's what has to change. We, we have to change that somehow.
Okay, yeah, right.
We really need to do that.
We are, we are.
I would like to ask, and we have all our current members of our police commission and one former member of our police commission here. So it's the pleasure of our supervisor, I'm just wondering if they have any input under this, if we want to-
Well, I mean, we can do that. We can, but in all fairness, I think the purpose of the police commission meeting tonight was for Ira, for, for the chairman to take this information and discuss it with his police commission. So I don't think they've really, because of the, as I best understand it, because one of the conversations is whether or not we're going to replace lieutenant, which is the purview of the board. The, the staffing from the sergeant on down, in some ways, is really technically really not our purview, okay? Really is for them to determine, you know, how to staff below and then deal with us having to do the negotiation, but-
Since we're all here.
No, no, I just want to say that they have not had the opportunity to have a discussion themselves.
I guess that's why I'm very interested in, I mean, do you want to have a discussion with us, or do you want to have a discussion amongst yourselves? That's all.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that they just haven't had the discussion. So, you know, that's all, I just wanted to let you know that their plan was to discuss this after us.
Okay.
So I can open it up, I have no problem asking-
I thought, I thought they were leaving at seven to go to the community center.
I think they're too riveted to listen to.
But we, no, we're just slowing them down, because the camera's here.
I mean, that's up to the police commissioner, if you want to join into the conversation at this point, ask questions, give some perspective.
I think you're asking the same questions that we've been asking, and I think you're having the same conversations that we've had with the chief. And, you know, I, the only, the only thing that I would, would impress upon you is, as you sit to think about where you're going, the, the biggest task that you have that I think really should be your front burner item, is to renegotiate that contract. Because that, that will help guide him as to where he can go down the road. Because talking about the bits and pieces that exist now with a contract that is, that really needs to be looked at again, because the economy has changed and our financial situation has changed, I think that's the first priority.
What, what, I'm sorry, what would you, if it's a front burner item, what would be the first item you would put on in that you'd, we need to change in the contract?
Well, I think if, if your focus is to look at perhaps changing the size of the department so that it meets his expectations, because I think it's important that the department be able to provide the protection of the services that the community need, but I think it needs to be something that is done, that fits with a plan that the chief has, but I think when you sit down and look at the contract, you need to focus on the cost, the money, the, you know, you need to figure out what you want to pay for, what you have the money for, and then we can-
Beyond staffing.
But, but the thing is, staffing's not in the contract except for potentially sergeants, so you're saying that we should negotiate the sergeants, because the patrol officers aren't part of the contract.
You, you could negotiate the sergeants, I, you know, I mean, I always-
Well, no, that's why I'm asking you, because you had said that, so manpower's not on there. Patrol officers aren't, there's no manpower on there. There are sergeants mentioned in there, so-
Items that are, that are part of that contract that, that should, should be looked at, I mean-
I just, I just, if I can just interrupt for one second, only from the perspective of, I understand what you're saying, and it's not a matter of disagreeing, part of the conversations we were having with the union right now and the chief, that yes, we have to go into negotiations, I think how the negotiations go are going to be dependent on the decisions that this board makes in terms of how we want to move forward with the staffing of the police department. And so I think it's really important to understand the cost implications in terms of every decision we make and what the outcome is, which is what we're looking at, because I think the decisions we make will impact what the negotiations will be like. And part of the reason why Bill and I sat down with Anthony was to sort of get a sense of what he was looking at. We sat down with the chief to get a sense of what he was looking at, so then we could go back to the board and say, okay, this is where we think we're going with negotiations, and if we go this route, this is what we think's going to happen. If we go this route, this is what we think's going to happen. But we're getting all of the input upfront, so the board then can be privy to it, so then we can make a decision of where we want to go.
There's one big piece of this, because it's August, that kind of changes the dynamic of the discussion, because what we don't want to have happen is what happened two years ago and three years ago, when at the budget table-
It's not going to happen.
We were saying, okay, we're going to cut some positions here. So now it's August, and I, I don't know what your timetable is, but I, I-
I can answer that if you want me to.
Okay.
I actually had a department head meeting today with all the department heads.
Okay.
And at today's department head meetings, I gave them all the budget worksheets, and I asked all of them to please give me a budget worksheets back with a zero percent budget and a ten percent decreased budget, and said that basically we were all in this together, and that we needed to, basically, I asked for all the departments, I explained what we were-
Susan, I think you misunderstood me. I'm actually speaking specifically about Joe, because-
Joe, Joe-
Did you get this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, she thought, yeah, I was there.
And they're supposed to get, and they're supposed to get it back to me, but I think the one thing I walked out, because I was running to a potential meeting, I thought I had, but anyway, we've got this-
The budget that I prepared to present-
August 31st, I'm asking for all the numbers back.
Is with the change, with keeping this staff the way it is, is ultimately what I'd like to see, but that's about a five-point-two percent decrease already. So I don't even have a zero for you, I could give you a zero if you'd like, but it's a five-point-two.
No, 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 I believe Susan said a ten percent.
So if you're looking at a ten percent, I will prepare one. It's not my ultimate staffing, or any cuts that I put in that will be up to the board to decide on, ultimately, when you approve or disapprove the budget. But I will prepare that. I think that for operations and every day, what we need to do today, and I know it's not today, because you have a meeting next Thursday, I wish it was today, because there's planning, interviews, a ton of stuff that has to go into this. But I would like to see the lieutenant's position be replaced and the sergeants, I'd like to see us negotiate and look at a schedule that will encompass three sergeants instead of four, and see if we can make that work. We have a sergeant that will be retiring sometime next year. We know how contract negotiations go, so chances are, he may be retired before that happens. The quicker we negotiate to have something in place that'll say, when the sergeant retires, we will then go to a three-sergeant schedule, if, again, we negotiate that. Again, for the bottom positions, I don't foresee us being able to fill those positions by the end of this year, especially by the time we get an approved budget in. Because of what goes into-
So you fill that with part-timers then?
I'm going to be filled with part-timers.
Which is cheaper than the regular salary rate? Yeah, because we don't pay retirement on them, and medical on them.
That's what you're saving, because you do pay retirement on part-timers.
Well, but it's one hour, one hour is credited every hundred hours or something.
Part-time officers make a little more than a beginning officer. A beginning full-time officer actually makes less than a part-time officer. But part-time officers, whether you've been there twenty years or you're starting, there's only one rate there. So I would fill with part-time right now the best we can. We do need to do more interviews to get a few more on board, you know, because we are hurting that. But I would say that-
What do you think the savings would be in a position?
If you're looking for a ten percent, then I would be eliminating one of the positions. That would probably be one of the things that happens.
You could do that through part-time, because again, just kind of keep in the back of your head that, and I would ask the police commission this too, is, and Joe, you and I had this conversation, is, what is it, and I'm glad we had that conversation, because it's, what is it that we, you, the community wants to see as a policing force? And there's not, there's not going to be a tremendous amount of movement. When you've got a one-point-three million dollar payroll, you're not going to get a lot of movement without doing substantial changes, very substantial changes. So I think that's the bigger conversation. And as far as savings, I don't know enough about police. I know part-time, any business are very difficult. I'm going to guess in policing, it's probably even more difficult. Having an attorney next to me trying to get them to court and what else they need to do is probably a challenge. So it can be expensive, but we save so much on the backend. We save on the benefits, we save on the retirement, because it's a very small retirement payment. So I guess, you know, the only I can say to the commission is, we absolutely, and Ren, I want to talk more about what you think we should do in the contract, but also, what[1761.21] what can we do? Is it part-time a good way to save, and what do those savings translate to? And is that operationally possible?
One of the things that we can't do is say, let's cut three positions and see how it works.
Right.
I think that would be a disservice to the community, to the members of the department, and to everybody that comes through New Falls. I think if we were to say, and you say, you don't like my budget with $113,000 decrease, you want more, and I were to say, all right, we'll hold off on hiring another person, then we would try the one, try backfill with part-timers, see how it works. I know we talked about that briefly about a dispatch. I'd rather not see that, but honestly, I think if we filled the dispatcher and tried it with a part-timer, you know, dispatchers work their eight hours, some of them have other assignments that they do as well, but they don't have follow-up investigations when they come back. When you fill with a part-time officer, the problem you run into, especially in a busy town like ours, is they'll take a pedal larceny complaint from you, then they're off for another week before they can come back and follow up. And that's not a good service to the community either. As I talked to Jeff, we said, well, we have the one dispatcher that's retiring, we're not going to save really much between filling with a part-timer and his salary. There'll be a little savings, but you'll save on the, the end of medical. We can try that and see how that works. Again, put on a few extra part-timers to help staff that. These are some thoughts and ideas, and these are things that we continue to talk, you know, over the next couple of months during the process of our, of our budgeting cycle. The part that we're really hung up on now is because we're at such a crippling standstill, is putting a lieutenant in place, getting a sergeant back in place, getting a detective back in place, because right now, we are operating very, in the skeleton crew, so to speak.
So, I just learned something, which is that apparently a case stays with the officer. So, because we're hearing a lot about the supervisory roles and all that, so if a part-time officer takes a petty larceny complaint, I had always assumed that that gets into the detectives or some other place for follow-up investigation, like you have a staff meeting or something, and...
Pedal larcenies are considered a minor case. Detectives generally handle felonies or things that involve interviewing people out of New Falls. So, they have to go to Highland, we don't want to send patrol officers out of our jurisdiction. So, if it's a pedal larceny that somebody took, you know, money out of your car, an officer will follow up to the best ability. Sometimes a detective will come out to fingerprint, sometimes our officers are certified to do a crime scene text, we call them, where they can lift prints and they do that work themselves. But it all depends, but if it's a part-time officer coming in, because they're not going to be in, sometimes they'll turn a case over, but it depends on availability. If you have one full-time officer working and one part-time officer working, the full-time officer's taking their own cases in, the part-timer's taking their own cases in, and we don't generally just say, we'll come in tomorrow and work it, because, unless it's something more of a serious matter or a case, because otherwise you're paying them more money just to do follow-up. Where full-time officers will come in, they'll take the case, they'll follow up the next day or the following day or continue.
So, how does John Q. Citizen know what's happened to that before that complaint?
Well, we'll keep them apprised of it, because the officers usually will follow up with them. It depends on what the case is, and depends on their availability. You know, again, if it's a minor thing that, you know, we'll let them know where we're at, and if we come up with any leads, we'll reach out for them.
Okay.
I have a question, and it's still pending, in regards to the sergeant, lieutenant, can they work, sergeant brings out sick, can they cover that shift in the salary you've been given? There's overtime, it's not, there's nothing in our contracts that overtime is guaranteed or...
Can you just ask the question again before you answer Bill?
Can lieutenant fill a sergeant's shot?
Well, the detective sergeant, if he doesn't fill, sergeant went out of sick, can they collect shift?
The lieutenant has his duties. The, the concept that, that in labor law is that if work is deemed to be exclusive bargaining unit work, is that it can't be transferred outside the, outside the bargaining unit. So, you run, you could run, you do run into issues, for instance, if in fact, the work is the work of a sergeant, and that, rather than provide the sergeant the work, it's provided to the lieutenant, the union could have a grievance or file what is known an improper practice charge with Purb, that you're taking exclusive bargaining unit work and transferring it to a non-bargaining unit. So, it does create issues.
Could you write it in their job description that they are patrol duty officer?
It's a historical basis. You could be writing in, in the job description that it provides supervision, but the issue would be, what has been the longstanding practice, we need that particular agency for filling, performing that type of work. So, that's, that's...
But that wouldn't apply to detective sergeant, because he's in the bargaining unit.
Right.
And he has rights to that overtime.
Right, right, detective sergeant is, is in the bargaining unit, so you don't have an exclusivity issue based upon state terror law.
We have had grievances on that, though, with the detective sergeant working for a patrol sergeant, taking their overtime, where the patrol sergeant's argument actually won the grievance, this was back when I was a detective, I actually worked for somebody that didn't want to work, he was going to be mandated. So, I said, well, don't get mandated, you have family plans. I said, I'll work it. And it was a grievance saying that because patrol can't work a detective overtime, we can't work theirs. And it was agreed upon back then. So, there could be issues, it could always change, that was several years ago, but there has been issues where a detective working a patrol function, because they don't have the same ability to work for a, for a detective.
It's not reciprocal.
I'm also looking to see if there's, some contracts have overtime distribution provisions. In other words, that you, available overtime will be rotated among those...
You can have it all.
Yep, right, yeah, so I'm looking to see if there's a, an overtime distribution. So, if, if there's a patrol overtime, it has to be given to patrol. You know, there are situations, very honestly, that are out there, that some municipalities are stuck with, where I've actually seen, for instance, lieutenants in the, in a regular bargaining unit, so, and they're eligible for patrol overtime. So, if in fact, a lieutenant works patrol overtime, they get a time and a half lieutenant's paid. So, which can become extremely, as you can imagine, a costly proposition for that particular municipality that might be burdened with that particular, you know, collective bargaining agreement. So, you know, that's why you try to keep overtime within rank, so that you're not paying overtime above the rank at a higher rate, a time and a half.
And the only time we usually OIC is when a sergeant's not available for overtime.
No, no, we, that's only, the weekends are when we always want to have a sergeant. If a day sergeant takes off for a vacation or sick, we don't backfill it.
But they're eating, you can, can't they argue, say, they're taking my overtime away, and you're paying them at your rate, and you were paid me...
They could, but they haven't.
But you're not paying anyone overtime, you're just not...
We're not filling it.
You're not filling it.
So, the argument, the argument being that, if the discretion of the employer went to
work here overtime, and if the employer decides to work here overtime, then who gets it? In this particular situation, the chief, they're not calling anyone in overtime. So, that's, that's the problem.
I mean, as long as you have the labor attorney here, it's good for the commission to have opportunities to ask questions.
Very simply, can lieutenant be assigned a C-line or an A-line and count as supervision? Or is that...
If, I believe if you do that in the absence of a sergeant, you'd be running him into litigation.
But you'd have to negotiate that, so...
Yeah, I'm talking under current structure. I think if in fact, that was the determination that was made, I think you would run into litigation.
Although, could I ask the chief a question? Is, if we were to put lieutenant in, would you be willing to have him work a shift different than yours?
Absolutely. We, we actually, you know, I know because lieutenant worked the same days as myself, as it stood now, we didn't always work the same shift. He was at three, six in the morning at times, and would work till four or five, depending. So, we didn't always work the exact, you know, seven to three each. The way, and I've discussed it now, that we'd probably be doing like a Sunday through Thursday, and probably be more of an 11:00 in the morning till seven at night, and it would be more fluctuation that way. And that's not, that's not a problem. The only thing that I'm not willing to do is, you know, take the lieutenant and say, you're going to work midnights. You know, that's useless, because the lieutenant does a lot of work that's not the same as myself, with taking numerous calls per day, which, that's going on right now with myself. But you do get, because people from the community or from outside the community, they call constantly for different things. So, it's, you know, we don't do the same work. But yes, to answer your question, I'm willing to make sure that we have a change. And again, depending on the need of the community, what's going on for certain events, it'll fluctuate that much more.
From the police commissioner's perspective, I mean, since the labor attorney is here and you don't usually get his, you know, to meet with him and stuff, and I mean, are there any other questions you guys would like to ask of him to help you in what, the work you have to do?
Yeah, you know, I do have a question, because it's, it's, it's one of those nettlesome things that come up and, right or wrong, you know, I think the police commission is there to represent the entire police body. And one of the questions that I have, we, we had a lengthy discussion about this at, at the commission table. The thing that, part of our function as a commission is to help the chief create policies and, and things of that nature for the department. And I'd like to know whether or not, I mean, where in the contract, I mean, at what point can the commission solicit input and talk to officers about things that are going to impact them if we're to work with the chief to formulate and create policies for the department at high height? Whenever we want to talk to an officer, it's, we, we get, you know, it's contractual, or it's this. I mean, if, as a commissioner, I would like to be able to walk up to a police officer and say, you know, how's the equipment that you have? Is it sufficient? Is it adequate? It's not tossing the barb at, at management per se, but it's, it's just, it's one of those things that I would, would need to know in order to make a decision when the chief comes to us and says, hey, I need, you know, 25 more, what is this?
Stun guns.
Stun guns, you know? I'd like to talk to the officer and say, you know, I mean, are they effective? Do you like using them?
Do you want the blue ones?
Who doesn't like using stun guns?
The chief, from his, his charge with the responsibility of the day-to-day operations of the department within the chain of command, the chief is, supervision and, and direction should go through, through the chief. So, I mean, it's a, you know, anything that would fringe upon his responsibility for the day-to-day operations of the police department. I mean, I'm not, I'm not familiar with any particular issues, you know, circumstances that you're raising, but I want to review your, you know, your, the charge of the commission and, you know, that's really beyond, I think, what I'm...
But this kind of, because the police commission has to conduct an annual review of the chief, which includes morale and talking to the officers, and I think that's when things get a little...
Actually, I think, just to answer that, and then I'm going to, you know, sort of wrap things up in a way. We were, a little while ago, Bill, myself, the chief, and Ira, as your chair, have been sitting and going through the rules and regulations of the police commission to try to better define what your role is, what his role is, what our role is, and stuff, and get real clarity on those things. And so, we were working on that to come back to the board and to the police commission to sort of say, okay, this is what we believe things say, and if we want to make changes, this is, you know, you know, but to really get that clarity that you're asking for, Randall. And then I think what happened was lieutenant put in his resignation, the sergeant's put in their resignation, and we all got so sidetracked now with how we're going to manage the police department, that the conversation of, the roles and responsibilities of the police commission got sort of put on the side. So, I think as soon as we start to sort of get this back into the bed, in a sense, and we know where we're going, we need to get back on that right away, because it is really important that you understand what you can and can't do, what he can, can't, can and can't do, and what the board can and can't do, you know, and so, we do have to get back to that.
Yeah, and I, and, you know, I'm not tossing bars at anything, but it's, it's, it's kind of limiting if, if part of the function is to help the community and...
Anyway...
Make decisions.
So, I guess my question is, we have some chickens and eggs, not chicken law, but chicken...
Watch area, no, nothing.
You know, so like, we, we have a request from the chief about these two positions. The commission is going to meet after this, and so, who's on first here?
Okay, well, this is what I was going to suggest, was, since the board is all here, since we have Bill, you know, and I try to like to limit him having to come back to New Falls at night, and I know he's going to still have to first, so I called him there, the doctor's appointment first thing in the morning, I don't want to keep him too late. But I think what might be a good thing, if everybody agrees, is if the board makes a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing contract negotiations, to see sort of what the thinking is of where the board will have to go with the contract negotiations, that gives some direction, which then might impact the thinking on this, we can go do that, have a preliminary, sort of touching base with where you as a board want Bill and I to go with contract negotiations. I know Anthony Safaro wants to talk next week, again, to see sort of where we're going and whatever. Let the commission meet now, talk about how they feel about this, and then we can come out, we can sit at the commission meeting, listen to what, to hear what they have to say. They're going to make recommendations to us about, I think, what they think they'd like to see us do, but we'll also have an sense from Bill about negotiations, where we think we might want to be going, and if that's okay with everybody, that's my suggestion of how to move forward.
Can I ask a question too?
Sure.
Anthony Safaro, did the union ask for him, or...
What do you mean?
Well, because does Anthony need, Anthony does not need to be part of negotiations, does he?
Anthony is a negotiation.
He's the president.
He's the president, but does he, well, no, I mean, that's not necessarily true, because there's, Anthony is the president of the union, but there's been other contract negotiations where Anthony has not always been there. Like, does the union request him, or does Anthony always have a right to be?
He, Anthony, he is the president of the statewide association.
Right.
He's been present at every meeting, and I, I've never attended a negotiating session in the last, ever since I've been working with him, not present.
Right. So, the answer is yes, he has every right to be there.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, yeah, he has a right to be there, the union can tell him not to, and I can talk about, that's, that's their internal structure.
Right, no, no, that's what I'm saying, is he, he has a absolute...
That's, that's between the union and him, but he's, he's the statewide, he's the president of my super, of the statewide organization.
Yep.
His input to whether we have a lieutenant or not really isn't his purview, because lieutenant's position is not a union position.
That's correct.
And, you know, in, in my opinion, when you have a, a union that wants to say, let's have an administrative sergeant, in my opinion, they are keeping another sort of union member in their, in their ball field, so to speak, to be solely myself against the entire union. That's why I think it's very important for a lieutenant's position, so you have some type of a level field where I have a second command that isn't a union member, that can do an IA, that can do follow-up, can do discipline, do counseling, without any internal union issue.
So, I'd like to answer your question from another perspective, Jim. If the board should choose to keep lieutenant and give it to sergeant, then Anthony with the union then decides how they want to approach coming back.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, no, I get that, yeah, yeah.
Coming back. So, everything is a chicken and egg, to an extent, and stuff, so...
So, before I make a motion, I just want to also, while the press is here too, is I do want to, because I just found out now, and Kitty is on, should be on board with this too, this is the first time I've sat on this board that the worksheets have been requested and actually met with the supervisor prior to the budget. So, thank you very much, Susan, I've been asking for that every year, Kitty will attest to that. So, I appreciate it tremendously, more than you know, you getting those out, and that you've met with everyone. I was wondering why I saw so many trucks here today, I guess that, I drove by, I was off today, I drove by, I'm like, why is Chris', why is that truck there? That answers why, they were all meeting with you.
What I will say, well, thank you for that, but I will say, I will say that Chris told me afterwards, I said, how do you think he goes? He goes, I think you scared everybody. It's pretty much what he said, I said.
Well, no, but we need to, we do need the worksheets though, to get our budget done, so I appreciate it.
And I just said also, just to know, I gave them paperwork sheets, and said, I want everything done paper-wise, then we will scan it and put it on electronically.
That's fine.
And I asked again, like I said, 0%, 10%, I'm asking for it back by August 31st, so then we can start meeting with, as a board collectively with all the departments, and then we can start putting the budget together collectively. What I also just want you to know, what I did ask each department is to, is how they can work together collectively with each other to figure out, so some of the, just some really good things that did come out of it, like you had, like the assessor and building department talked today already about the fact that one person needs four files, one person needs one, so if they buy a five, five-file cabinet together, they could actually just buy one file cabinet versus two combined, and then that led to a conversation of how to actually be an assessor and building.
And then you assess, you assess one file instead of having two.
Right, exactly, but also even out of that came like equipment, in terms of like, not everybody buying their own dump truck, but how we could share. And so, actually, in a sense, what happened today was, when you're putting your budgets together, then we're going to take them and take all the equipment and have everybody sit down and say, well, we need, everybody needs this, how do we then buy one piece of equipment that could be shared? So, it's going to be a step-by-step process in a way to take what they want, then bring everybody together, see where we could save the money, buy less, do with, you know, do more with less, and then hopefully come together with a budget that sort of, you know, ends that everybody was on the same team, and then it's not like one department.
Thank you, that's what's needed.
So, anyway, thank you. So, anyway, but thank you.
And I'd like to make a motion that the board go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations.
Second.
Any more discussion?
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, motion so carried. We're gonna get ready to go, Ira, you could have.
You guys can all take your seats here.
Important question.
Sure, go ahead.
These are your seats now.
I was taught at a very young age that you only drive a police car in a dire emergency public speed. In the last month, twice in this town, they went through this way, nowhere ever, police department within 10 miles, went over 75 miles an hour, like a madman up to the death of the church. Monday morning, two cars came down Main Street at excess of 65 miles an hour, bumper to bumper. And I went down to pick the kid up at the laundry man, I asked him, what the hell did you put there, chase it? They said a burglar, they should both have been fired on the spot.
Susan, are you letting everyone else come out and do your questions?
Sure, sure.
... allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, I'd like to propose, in addition to the agenda, that I just thought we had to listen to this conversation, and that's, I'd like to have a discussion on sending a letter to the town board requesting that the town attorney be present at the discussion about the organization, and make sure that the rights of the commission and the people are protected, and just want to add that to the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Can I have a little question?
Yeah, sure.
Are we gonna word it that way? I think, you know, I think the town board does have the.
I want to have a discussion on how, we'll decide how we're gonna word it, like we did with the grievance.
Okay, so that was the same, I don't, that was.
I just want to have a discussion on it. No, I mean, the town board certainly has the right, and we certainly have the right to request that they have a town attorney, not a labor attorney, to protect the law so that there is no violation of law, but we can discuss that, that'll be under new business. Okay.
Do we have to vote on it, right? Say, well, I'll say.
Okay, we ready, we had four votes.
Well, you didn't get my vote yet. You got my vote.
I didn't care, we had four votes, it didn't make a difference.
Aw, you matter.
Okay, community spirit. Anybody here for community spirit? Nope, okay. Old business, accreditation, chief.
It's old business. I have not done anything with accreditation. We had a meeting scheduled that was interfered when we were dealing with the homicide, so we have not gotten back to that, and then with the retirement of lieutenant, retirement of sergeant, and everything going on, I have had no time at all to, to sit down and go over the couple policies that need to be reviewed to work to the accreditation.
But you had told us it would be done by September.
Yeah, and homicides happen.
No, no, I understand homicide, but you also told us that Ducoke, who's gonna do it and help you and.
Yep, and he, and he was scheduled to come in for a meeting, and then we actually had another meeting that we tried to squeeze in, and there was a conflict with his hours as well.
So, you're not gonna make the September deadline? I want to know now, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to be sitting here in September and be told.
And honestly, commissioner, honestly, it all depends on what happens with the lieutenant's position, because I'm, I'm just saturated with paperwork and phone calls and, and everything else, and unfortunately, that can't be a priority at this point.
No, no, I, I understand that, as I said, I just didn't want to be blind, so I maybe want the commission to be blind, so that you give me a specific date to come in on that date and be told.
No, if it's satisfactory with the commission, I'd like to see what happens with our replacing of some of these positions, getting things back on track, and then I'll come up with giving you another time period where we can try to get this accomplished.
Well, why don't we just move, I mean, why don't we just move it? I mean, there's no point in holding him to a September date, you know, I mean, move to January or December.
I'm not gonna move a date, since he can't give us one, I don't think. So, what I'm saying is, because we can say, I just wanted to know now, I didn't want to say, I didn't want to sit at the meeting in September and say, okay, chief, where's your report, and then be told, we now know we're not gonna get it at the deadline. I don't want to make a new deadline if we're gonna keep extending the deadlines. Let's leave it open, and let, at the next meeting, let the chief give us a new deadline. I don't want to make a deadline for him unless he doesn't give us a deadline at the next meeting, in which case, we'll give him the deadline, but we're not holding him to the deadlines anyway, so why?
Well, I want, I, that, trust me, that is a goal that I want to see accomplished, you know, but unfortunately, if things come up and it's, it doesn't interfere with the process, but, and actually, if you want to look at October with having an opportunity to bring it up and discuss where we're at, if there's been any additions to, that'll give us two months, and hopefully, like I said, hopefully, we can get everything in order where we can be back up and functioning the way we need to be.
Okay, the next item is the chief's proposal for reorganization. I would like for us to consider, for somebody to consider, if we made a motion that we tabled this, since we've got no information at this meeting from the town board, and this was the key to our discussion, they were supposed to, this meeting was supposed to be, they were supposed to let us know whether they were gonna fund a lieutenant, weren't gonna fund a lieutenant, what they were looking for, how much money they were willing to spend, and they didn't. I don't know about anybody else's feeling, I don't want to do their job.
Well, I think that they're gonna meet Thursday to discuss and, and make a motion, I believe, and, and a decision. Um, I think it would be imperative for the commission to send them a recommendation, what we feel we need for a police department, and whether we need an administrative sergeant or lieutenant, and I think it's urgently important for this commission to take a stance and send the board, commission, send the, the town board a letter saying that we support, hopefully, it's gonna be the lieutenant's position, and, you know, again, we're at a standstill. I would like to see us set up interviews for early next week so that Thursday, when they do vote, they hopefully will say, you know, that we have interviews behind us because this is pushing us into the end of the year.
Did Susan say that we were gonna meet again when they were done and after we were done?
Oh, she didn't say anything, they just went into this meeting, whatever. The problem with that, chief, is I don't want to make the town board's decision for it. I don't want to be the person that people in the, in the town board are gonna say, well, we didn't want the lieutenant, but the commission recommended.
Well, you are the police commission though, and, and your recommendation, I think, is important.
But the lieutenant's position, or the funding of the lieutenant's position right now is strictly up to the town board. If they want to fund it, fine, we'll go along and make the plan. If they don't want to fund it, I don't want to be told, we're not funding it, so, okay, fine, we have to now make a plan without a lieutenant.
What if they say Thursday, well, we don't know if the commission wants, their recommendation is a, a, an administrative sergeant or a lieutenant. I think we should have a stance of where we are as a whole.
I mean, if they're willing to discuss this some more once they're done, I think we should certainly discuss that.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
Well, yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, I, the, I mean, this is the first that I saw this today, you know, and I, you know, again, not throwing stones, is if, if you wanted a decision out of us tonight, we probably should have all been hunkering down on this before you were hunkering down on it with them.
We, we've met, I met with Ira, we went over these things, we had these discussions.
We had discussions and plans, Steve, but this paperwork was distributed to the town board, and I made a copy for us, but it was sent in, I remember, that's why I was still up until today this afternoon, and I understood the differences in the figures, so I wasn't gonna push it, but the point is.
It was supposed to be a joint meeting, is my understanding, I prepared all this stuff weeks ago, and tonight, we come in, and I understand, nothing was handed out, and then, because of the change and the new things I just did up today with the change because of, I mean, this could change again tomorrow.
No, no, I understand.
So, I, I reprinted these up in the back to.
But this was supposed to be a joint, a joint meeting with the town board, and it wasn't a joint meeting with the town board, it was a town board meeting discussing reorganization. And the whole key to this particular meeting tonight was for them to tell this commission, yes, we decided we're gonna fund the lieutenant's position, or no, we decided we're not gonna fund the position. That's their purview, the lieutenant, and I don't think, I personally, I don't, so everybody can make their own, I personally, chief, do not want to make that decision for them. Let them make the decision, let them decide to do. What our personal view is, you know, that's one thing, but I don't want to make the decision for their, that's their responsibility, it's not the, you want to talk about the line officers, the sergeants, the foot patrol, and all that other stuff, that's our responsibility. When it comes to you and the lieutenant, that's their responsibility, and they should have made that decision tonight, or they should have given us some direction. They gave us no direction, which is what this meeting was supposed to be, they gave us no direction about the lieutenant, they gave us no direction about the money, they gave us no direction about filling spots, and I don't think that, again, this is just my opinion, and I will shut up, I don't think we should be going forward with this with half information, just like they were, didn't want to deal anything in half information. I don't think the commission should put itself in a position of going forward with half information, leave itself exposed. That's all I have to say, and if anybody else has something to say.
And what half information do we have that, that they have that we don't? You say, I can see his argument, we, we just got any information, we didn't get a chance to absorb, but I think part of our role is also, I think, those of us sitting here probably have more knowledge about what the department per se in regards to management, what happens from the junior officer all the way to the chief than the town board. I think what we have to, you know, we can maybe not make a decision, but I think it's something we should start discussing. I mean, I think that's crucial, that we have the chief here, let's pick his brain. I think, I think, I think the discussion can be had, but I mean, I think the, the proof in the pudding is, we made a presentation, the chief made a presentation tonight of the budget, and the comment out of the supervisor's mouth was, we're not making a decision tonight, we need to study this, we need to look at this. And I, you know, I recognize the urgency for the chief, and I'm, you know, I don't, you know, I have my opinion about the lieutenant, which, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm still, you know, um, you know, if we can do the administrative sergeant and make him not union, that would be, that would be great, for, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm just, you know.
There's no money savings, there's no money savings, and we're actually, we're, we're creating an issue where it's me against the world, in-house, in operations, and operations right now are, our department's a good running department, we don't have some major issues, you know, and when we do get issues, we deal with them. You know, what we're doing is we're creating a, a situation where I'm not going to be able to have a second in command to do internal investigations. I have something going on right now where I told Detective Sergeant to get memos, but he can't take an action, he's gotta forward it to me, and, and I have to take an action, I have to meet with the commission and go over it because of the severity of it, but if it wasn't as severe, it can't be resolved at his level, it's gotta be resolved on my level, and, you know, again, if we were saving $80,000, that's one thing, but we're talking about putting an administrative sergeant in to do some of the duties, but not all the duties, and to be a member of the union, which totally hampers the ability for the job to be accomplished.
Well, let me ask this, do you think our opinion is gonna matter? I mean, we basically were told, you know, they're trying to figure out what our role is in response, and what we can and can't do, so, I mean, it probably really doesn't matter what we think.
Well, I, I think as a police commission, I think, more so than everyday operation, I think this is something that we should discuss, get input on, to put forward. If there were to be interviews, you'd be part of the interviews, because your job description is soliciting and interviewing for the lieutenant's position, making a recommendation to the board who ultimately has the decision. If you were to set up interviews next week, and then go, attend their meeting on Thursday and say, we did interviews, we have a recommendation, if you're willing to go forward, this way, we're not now going into September. It's just, we're putting ourselves, I mean, we're in, our department is falling apart right now in front of our eyes, and nobody's willing to make a decision. I haven't done interviews because we have to do interviews together, which I don't think we should do, and, and based on the thing, and I know we have a conversation going on, and, but I'm down four part-time officers, I'm down two part-time dispatchers, I'm down a full-time dispatcher, I have one detective sergeant that's doing the job of detective, because the other detective is a sergeant, we're, we're crippled. McKay's is not sleeping at night now because he's getting phone calls through tonight, coming in, working cases during the day, going through the DA's office on the homicide, and other burglary case and a rape case that he's working. We are overwhelmed, and we're sitting here saying, what do we want to do? And it's just, we're, we're handcuffed.
Chief, you're 100%.
I feel like a prisoner.
You're 100% right, and the whole purpose of tonight's meeting was supposed to be a simple decision, yes, we will fund the lieutenant, or no, we won't fund the lieutenant. Knowing that, we could have sat here and come up with a plan of action, and I have discussed it, board has discussed it, a plan of action, but we can't do that, or we're gonna waste our time going through all of this and having, I don't care about the interviews, I have as much time as the world, I mean, I don't want to talk about anybody else, but, you know, you want to do that, but I'm not, I, I can't sit here and make a recommendation. If they, if they won't make a recommendation, and they're responsible for the lieutenant, and they're putting off, making a decision, because they want us to make the decision for them, I just can't find it.
Well, when they say that, yes, we'll do lieutenant's position, what's gonna have to happen then is we're gonna have to sit down at a meeting, or we're gonna have to schedule interviews, and then, or decide then if you want a commission, or are you saying that whatever the board says goes? I, I don't know.
When it comes to lieutenant, if the board says, no, we're not gonna fund it, it's a dead issue, there's nothing we can do about it. That's within their, as I understood it, is within their domain, not us, you and the.
So, if they say they want a lieutenant, then.
Then we go forward with a lieutenant.
So, then we don't have to discuss this here at all, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, your, your, the, your other positions are theoretically our responsibility.
No, the whole point is, if they, if they had made a simple statement, yes, we've decided, we decided that it's, we're going to fund the lieutenant, everything that we've all been talking about, everything we've all been thinking about falls into place. If they come back and say, no, we don't want to fund the lieutenant, we want you to get rid of the lieutenant's position, that changes the whole perspective, because then we have to go and decide about this, what is he, this staff sergeant?
Administrative sergeant.
Administrative sergeant, and as your report said, and your report was very simple, your report that you gave to them, that they refused to, you know, well, they only got, I mean, it's, it's really simple, you're looking at a report that says administrative sergeant costs, costs A, lieutenant costs B, we say, the, the, by using an administrative sergeant, you may save $2,000, whatever that report said, I don't have it in front of me right now, that's crazy. It, it's a simple decision, you, you, and, and that's why I'm, I'm just going crazy with it, because it's a simple decision, you're saying that, and I made my note here, that administrative sergeant would cost approximately $71,000, and the lieutenant, the lieutenant's position.
79 up top.
Was 79. We're talking, you know, I mean.
And it's, and it's actually, that is the lowest differential, it's anywhere from 74,000 to 79,000.
That's what I'm saying, and for them not to make the decision so that we can go forward, because it's really very simple, chief, I agree with you. Look, I have no problem, if the commission wants, hold interviews.
Could we, to the wheelies, if they were together, I think, are we in favor of a lieutenant as opposed to an administrative sergeant?
Let me just say that, I think the bigger picture is, Kenny made a good.
The cost savings.
They're at a pivotal point where they want to decide what they want to do with the department based on finances, so to make a decision about a lieutenant versus two officers or six officers, or a staff sergeant, without knowing what they want to spend or what they want to cut, is kind of doing a disservice at this point. I'm willing to sit down and discuss what they want to do when they come out, but the bigger picture, that was stated, was they want to decide what's gonna be done financially with the entire budget. We've saved $100,000 this year, but it was made clear, three, five, 10 years down the road, that savings isn't gonna be there, and I'm not saying they're right or wrong, I'm not saying what should happen at this point, because we're not having that discussion just yet, but, I mean, I understand your position, you want action, and I agree, you should have some action.
Is our role different from the town board's, in that we're not making recommendations based on economics like that, but we're making them based on safety and?
That's what we're supposed to be, no, economics, we have to look at economics.
We need economics, we need everything, it's all of it, it's not just.
For example, when the county, when the labor attorney was talking, and finally Susan brought it up, because I can't, he's the one who said, even though there's four sergeants in the contract, that by getting rid of, and that's negotiations, you're leaving yourself open, it was finally Susan, because that's what he, his statement was, you're giving yourself open for an impact.
Arbitration.
An impact, arbitration number one, and you're leaving yourself open for a lawsuit, because you don't have administrative coverage of your offices.
Well, that's essentially my question, is that, isn't that what, what we're here to be thinking about?
At that level, yes.
Is that safety element not, not fitting into a budgetary constraint at this point, but making a recommendation that's separate from the board?
Well, no, we have, no, we have, we have to try to find a balance. That's our job, is to find a balance, we can't say, look, I'm, I'm a firm believer is to find a balance. We can't say, "Look, I'm, I'm a firm believer of particularly of certain situations that, you know, we need, we need the officers." There's no question about that. But we're, we're, we're not talking about officers. I'm saying the contract says four, four sergeants. Fine, we have to have four sergeants. Uh, the chief has come up with a plan. He didn't give it here with names, which is-
Part of, part of the issue that I have commissioners is that, um, at, at this point, we're at a standstill with the scheduling. Uh, we hired Quigley to take on the-
Excuse me for interrupting. You, please continue the question exactly.
We hired Quigley to take on the patrol officer position. Uh, we haven't, she's just finishing the FTO, so I need to move her into shift. In doing that, we put out a shift that's available for Bender, what Bender created when she had left, Officer Bender. Before I made that move, we also have a D-line officer that has to be moved into a tour. Before we made that move, we have a detective that needs to be appointed. We didn't do the detective interviews yet because depending on what happens with the lieutenant's position will change the dynamics of who applies for the detective position that may be applying for the sergeant's position that becomes vacant with the replacement of the lieutenant. So it's this whole domino effect of movement. And when we move a tour, we end up paying overtime to officers because they have to work more days in a week to go into the new rotation. I don't want to do that. I didn't want to do that until it was one simple move to say, "Okay, you're going in here. You're doing this. You're up here." And we now have the schedule set for the patrol officers. I can't do any of that right now. So what's going to have to happen is tomorrow I have to go back, um, and start moving people around, paying overtime for them to go into their new shift. And then in two weeks or three weeks down the road, we're going to do it again. You know, and that's not financially smart. So I'm trying to do a smooth transition to be cost-effective as well as effectively scheduling people without, you know, stirring up the pot too many times in a month.
You certainly are strapped and you need some kind of help. So when Ira comes back, you've got some time to think. What is it that you need us to do tonight? If we can do it, that's going to assist you in, in day-to-day operations. And I'd probably wait till Ira.
Thank you for asking that. I was thinking exactly that.
Because you are strapped.
We figured it all out.
Good. See, they, I should go away more often. It's a lot easier.
We're all meeting in Hawaii and we're going to talk about this with some little drinks with little umbrellas on it.
I mean, it, it just, as, as a commissioner, it's very frustrating to me.
Well, we had a question for the chief.
Yes, ask him a question. Go ahead. You can reiterate, please.
Um, what does he need for us so that he can move forward once the town board makes a decision? Is that correct? So that we're not-
I didn't even, without the town board, what do you, what do you think he needs for us to do?
If we can do it.
What I'd like to see occur is that we at least jump in front of the eight ball a little bit with scheduling interviews for early next week. If we can interview for the lieutenant's, uh, position, if the town board says no-go, well, then that person may be the administrative sergeant anyway. Um, I have McKaysey right now as second-in-command to oversee things. Um, honestly, with him doing that and detective work, I don't know how much I can really give him. Um, because like I said, he's, now he's starting with the phone calls at night and stuff. I'm splitting it up with him. I'm taking calls tonight and tomorrow, um, just so he's not getting everything.
Well, as I said, chief, I have no problem with that.
That would give you peace of mind.
Well, it won't, not just me, but it'll give a direction that, all right, although it's not officially approved yet, we at least have the date scheduled.
You're ready.
So when they meet next Thursday, if they say, "Okay, let's vote on it," we then, I can call civil service, say, "Send me the list so we can make an appointment." Or if somebody's appointed that's not on the list, it'll be a provisional, provisional, we'll have to request a test. Um, you know, we have two people that are, that want to be interviewed, uh, that are on the chief's list that can be used. Uh, there's only one person that wants to be interviewed that's not on any list that would have to take a test. But we can get that started. Um, so we can-
Let me, let me ask this.
What about advertising?
Yeah, but I have, I have another, I have another question tonight and you, you've chosen Detective Sergeant to fill in because the lieutenant's position is open.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, if I saw correctly, there was, was it Officer Lapp?
Sergeant Lapp.
Sergeant Lapp was also interested in that spot. Uh-
Sergeant Baker.
Was it great?
Well, Sergeant Baker, the commission, in my opinion, should make a decision. He did not submit his application on time. I still have not received his resume. Um, whether you choose to interview him or not, we-
My, my, my question, and it, uh, you have two people who are vying for this position. Is it possible for you to, uh, field test the both? For, I mean, I mean, I, I don't know how, it, it just seems, it seems, it seems, it just seems, I mean, you've got, I mean, you're-
The second-in-command?
Yeah, you've got, it's a second-in-command. You've got just two people and a possible third. Um, I presume you have two, they're two good employees. Um, and it, you know, it just seems to me like objectivity is an important function here if it's going to, if you're going to go with a second-in-command. And I, and I think resting that total responsibility on one of two candidates perhaps may show bias. And I'm not saying that there is, but it's, 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 it's not, it, it, it doesn't give that other officer an opportunity to show you what he can and cannot do so that you are then able to come to us and say, "I've watched both of these guys. I gave him it for two weeks and I gave him two weeks and here's what I found." And then we can help you make that decision based on what you've found because you've got two people who are in your department, who are vying for this same spot, who you've given an equal opportunity to test drive that second seat. And to me, it looks like the decision has been made and whether it is or not, it, it's, again, the appearance that the decision has been made as to who is going to fill that spot. And I don't think that is the way it should be done. But you are responsible for day-to-day operation of the department.
Seeing that you brought all this up in, in, you know, in the open meeting, um, I've been watching both these members, uh, one of which for 20 years, uh, the other one for my whole career of close to 25 years. Um, so I do have a good idea of capabilities, abilities, uh, responsibility, uh, what they, what they handle day-to-day operations now prior to this movement. Um, but I also look at the, uh, the availability and ability based on scheduling as the detective sergeant's position, which has flexibility to best oversee the department as second-in-command, who already takes calls at night, who already has a car issue that if he has to respond from home. Uh, there's, there's a lot of things that are already laid out in place. So that transition of putting somebody second-in-command, again, I was hoping it was going to be a week so that we can have some stuff laid out. This isn't, if this is going to be a six-month thing, I cannot leave everything on Detective Sergeant's-
And I'm not being, I'm not being critical.
No, no, I understand.
I'm totally not being, I'm totally not being critical.
But I just can't give that responsibility to one person. This is going to be a long period of time. I have to start to lining things up. What I'm afraid of doing once I do that is, is going to be an impact arbitration for them doing lieutenant's jobs and abilities.
Are they getting overtime? Is this detective sergeant getting overtime for responding in the middle of the night to phone calls?
If, not for phone calls. If he has to come out, usually if he's coming out, he'd be coming out as a detective anyway. So he'd be getting the overtime except the lieutenant will be telling him to come out. So he gets the call and he'll make a decision to come out on those things.
So no real difference in-
There's no real difference in it. If I were to assign, uh, another sergeant, one of the other sergeants to it, they're in their schedule that has no flexibility. Um, and it just, you know, then we have to, you know, assign them a car potentially, you know, so there's a lot more that goes into it. And again, if this is a temporary thing, I don't want to stir up everything in that nature.
I, I, I under, I totally understand. I'm, you know, what I'm saying is it's, it's a, it's a, it's almost as if it's a fait accompli and, and I, 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 I just personally have a problem with it. And I, I, and it's, it is, it is, you know, my meds probably won't be good.
I did, I did review both resumes and, uh, and their, uh, a letter of interest. And I did put that a little bit to the equation. And at the time of interviews, you'll be able to review both. And you may as well see why I selected one also.
So open meeting should-
Let's be careful about talking about personnel issues and your-
Well, I'm not talking about personnel. I'm just saying, I reviewed these things. So it wasn't that I just said, "I like the color of your hair. You're in, you're not."
Making a statement as a reminder that's open meeting and personnel issues such as Ira, probably in motion, you know.
So, so you needed a motion to be able to-
I'd like to schedule interviews if you can for Monday or Tuesday night would be probably great. Monday or Tuesday night?
Tuesday's not good for me.
Very rare, but Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Wednesday on, yes.
Thursdays are my availability. Tuesday, Thursday.
Well, what are you talking, night? Night to you is what time should-
I'm sorry?
What time do you mean by night?
I'm available anytime. So it depends on the commission. Are you available during the day?
I'm available every day.
Next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm available.
I can make daytime.
Any daytime?
Well, we need to-
After one o'clock on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Starts getting-
What do you have to do, sir?
Thursday, if you're talking Thursday in the afternoon.
So to be clear, you're requesting that we interview even though we're-
At least start interviewing through lieutenant.
Yes.
Is that, I mean, are we all in, is, are we all in agreement or disagreement with that?
Oh, no. I said to you before at the very beginning, before we were saying, that I have no problem with the, with the chief asking us to do the interviews. I just am not-
You don't want to do the recommendations?
I don't want to do recommendations. I don't want to do financing. I don't want to do anything unless they come out and finally tell us what they were supposed to tell us, yes or no. It's a simple question. Yes or no?
They're meeting us Thursday also. So they're meeting us Thursday also.
I know.
So we can make a recommendation if they so choose to have a lieutenant, this would be our person if we do the interviews prior to Thursday?
I, I think the, the motion that we, I, to, to cover the basis is that the, the commission, I would move that we, on the advice of the chief, that we conduct-
Requested chief.
At the request, at the request of the chief, advice of the chief, that we request or we conduct interviews for the lieutenant. But the conduction, the conducting of those interviews does not indicate our support or disapproval for filling the position of lieutenant. That, so that it's, so that it's clear that we're not-
Did you get that Becky? That's, no, that's an important one. That's why I wanted to be sure.
You don't think, again, you don't think that the commission should say, "You know what? We think that our department should have a lieutenant around."
That's my personal opinion. I, I don't think that, I think what our opinion is, is no bearing in terms of lieutenant. It's got to be, they, chief, it's a simple decision. They sat here for two and a half hours instead of the half hour that they promised us and they talked about everything but what they promised us that we're going to talk about.
Oh, God, I like, can I keep my mouth shut?
Yeah.
I know, but I, I'm, I'm going to say, I'm going to disagree with you. Um, I think that as a police commission, if I were, I mean, as a board member who gets recommendations from committees, I find it invaluable that the committees are recommending things to us because it's, that's the whole point. Um, and I think if you don't want to be the person who takes responsibility for making those recommendations, maybe you don't want to be on the commission. Um, and I know that you want to be on the commission. I think you're good on the commission. I think you're an excellent chair, by the way. But, um, I, I think that that's part of what the role is. And I totally get what you are saying and I understand and I feel like it's often used at, a lot of these things are political footballs, but it's just so, I mean, that's, that's why you're here.
You know, and I, I-
Yeah, hopefully.
Agree with you. All I'm saying is right, right now for me, and it, it may mirror Ira's point of view, is that I would like to sit down and look at this for a couple of hours or three, uninterrupted, where I can pull out my calculator and-
Before you make that recommendation?
Before I, before I, because I-
That's completely separate. I can appreciate that.
You know, I mean, my point of view is that, you know, I mean, I'm starting from a point where I didn't think we needed a lieutenant. And I, you know, right now, I perhaps still don't think we need a lieutenant. But listening to the chief today, you know, it was like, okay, well, if there's money to be saved here, you know, then perhaps maybe I want to, I, I want to do that. But at the same time, if we're going to do that, are there ways that we can make this position different than the one that was there before? You know, I mean, there's, there's-
There's room to-
Well, we could talk about that right now.
Yeah, no, the idea, Arianna, the problem is, like, forget the political part of it. This is the responsibility of the town board. Like, the commission, they make recommendations.
I hear you, yeah.
Okay. If we make a recommendation, it takes them off their hook for making the recommendation. This is one hundred, we'll make any recommendation, but all we want is a simple, "I'm going to fund it, I'm not going to fund it." That is not a major problem for them to discuss. That's what they were supposed to discuss tonight. And you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but the mere fact that they obstacated their responsibility and they, and I don't think we should take it up on them because then the answer is, well, we didn't want it, but the commission made us. You see, you, you see how they operate.
But, but I feel like that's, that's not, to me, that's not a valid reason on their part because you can make whatever recommendation you make and if the decision's up to them, the decision's up to them. And I feel, so, so it can't, you know, like, I would never hold you more accountable than the person who made the decision.
The, the town board is going to make the final decision.
Exactly.
I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
At this point, I'm the one that's been meeting with the board, trying to sell my, my position for the lieutenant, for people lieutenant.
And I think you did an excellent job.
Thank you. But then now, I think if, it's not just me going in there, it's, it's us as a commission and board saying, and chief saying that, you know, "We've reviewed this. We looked at these. We weighed out the differences and for the savings of three thousand dollars that may end up," you know lieutenant, what his salary is. The sergeant, if you gave him a five thousand differential after 162 hours, everything above that is greater than that. There's some sergeants that make as much as me, you know, so because of overtime. So when you look at the whole picture, and I think we all agree that you need a second-in-command of an agency of our size and of our, of our community. So if that, if we're in agreeance, then it says, "Well, do we want a sergeant who we have no control over?"
Right.
Or a lieutenant who isn't outside the union, somebody that's not going to get overtime, somebody we can say, "You know what? We have this protest going on. You're working and you're going to be working 16 hours." We had the homicide. We worked, both of us worked close to 16-hour days, two days in a row to make sure everything was covered. You know, there was no overtime on that. You know, that's what lieutenant and, and my position as chief, we do. Uh, we fluctuate. If we're union members or the second-in-command is a union member and I say, "Hey, I need you to stay." Sure, as long as you pay me, you know, and, and then it becomes a money issue. Um, I'm going to be out of town for vacation the end of this month. Um, you know, this second-in-command is going to be paid chief's pay while I'm out of town, where lieutenant's pay is a lot less, you know, and so that's where the money starts piling up and we're wasting, where we can make a decision hopefully soon.
And the only reason I'm not changing my, is because as you say, chief, this is a very simple decision. And for the fact that they don't want to make that decision makes me very suspicious.
I think our decision needs to factor into their making of their decision. I really do.
And I think I would be very happy to sit down in executive session and, and at least give you an idea as to where we stand. And I, and I think we shouldn't sit down and hash it out tonight as to what-
It's not executive session.
Yeah, why is that executive session?
It's not executive session material.
Okay.
I don't know if it's a personality.
There's no person involved with that position right now.
No, this is a position we're talking about.
Yeah, but there is no lieutenant. We're not talking about a person.
This is a funding matter right now. You know, regardless, I, I know my position. I mean, I was listening to the chief and I know my position. But again, it's a funding matter and it's a simple matter. And that, that's what bothers me. I don't understand why for something so simple, they don't want to make a decision. There's got to be a reason for it. You don't just throw a monkey wrench into something unless there's a reason for you doing it. Now, they're the ones, certain members of the town board, the ones that have been trying to get rid of lieutenant's position for a long time. This would be the perfect opportunity for them to just simply say, "We're not going to fund it" because that, they have the right to say that.
It'd be a good position too for the commission to say, "You know what? We've discussed this. We've weighed out the options. We looked at the difference in, in, in money. And, and if this is the true numbers of what we're looking at, and if you have to look at the numbers, then, you know, you know, for a difference of that, if there is any difference, we would like to see the lieutenant's position.
Is there a motion on the table? Was it seconded?
There's a motion about having a special meeting.
Was it seconded or?
Special meeting.
No, it wasn't an interview.
Interview.
No.
Yeah, we never went-
You never went to the-
Was it seconded?
Huh?
Was it seconded?
We never said it. We, we talked about it.
We've never seconded it. Steve seconded.
Can you read it back?
No, we were talking about it.
A date. Yeah, we, we said maybe Thursday and that's where we started.
Can you read-
We didn't get an order for word.
That's all right.
Um, you made a motion that the police commission, on the request of the chief, that interviews for the lieutenant position, but it does not mean that you are supporting or not supporting lieutenant's position.
And we just have to, we, we had to-
And that's where we got off track.
Right, that's where we got off track. We still have to get the date. What date are we talking about?
Well, we should agree to, we should agree to either conduct the interviews or not. And if we, why set up a date if we vote?
Oh, okay. You want to do it. I was, I was going to do it all in one shot. Okay.
So, I mean-
All of us in favor?
Conducting the interviews.
Conducting the interviews. Now we just have to say-
And no second, you said? Is your name Ariana?
Yeah, Ariana. I said who's seconded.
Steve seconded.
Sorry. Process.
No, Steve seconded.
Yeah.
Oh, his phone was ringing.
Now we just got to get a, now we just got to get a mutual-
Unavailable Monday.
I can do any date but Tuesday after one o'clock and beyond.
Wednesday, Thursday.
You're not available at all on Tuesday?
Tuesday, I'm not available, not until the evening.
Uh, Monday, Monday is a problem. Monday is a problem in terms of notification.
For what?
We're having a special meeting.
It is today what?
Today is Thursday.
Today is Thursday?
And-
I remember my conversation with the gentleman in Albany, and I believe I was told that if we make a good faith effort to inform people, that is sufficient notification. It's not counting the days, it is a good faith effort. We have a member of the press here, we're setting up a meeting, we can post whatever we need to post on the-
On the door.
On the door, and put it on the village website, and put it on the hoozy goozy website. But, it's also important to note that that meeting will quickly turn into an executive session, because it is for employee interviews.
Yeah, no, the, we also gotta make, well, if it's not available here, with the-
We could use the police station again, like we have had in the past. And if the public does show for the beginning of the meeting, they can be invited in, then we can tell them we're going to executive session, we can ask them to leave.
I'd rather use the, what's it called, community center than the police station. But, that's my opinion, not the one we're planning on.
I don't care, the only reason I would also think for the community center is because it's central, and if somebody wants to show up, they can walk, because they live in, you know what I mean, it's, they're here, as opposed, it's easier to get to than, but I don't, I don't really care, but I understand.
It's perception. When you do this kind of stuff with the police department, and the perception is, you're doing something, we're doing it behind closed doors, but the perception is, you know, there. Should be done at, either here, if you can get the room, what time we decide.
What day?
I thought you guys decided.
I can do Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday.
Oh, you can't do that.
Late in the day.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Fridays.
Any day is good for me.
So, Wednesday's good?
Wednesday, I think Wednesday.
Wednesday's good?
Monday through Thursday is possible.
So, what day, what day have we decided?
Sounds like Wednesday, the 15th.
Wednesday?
Yeah, it's good for Wednesday.
And evening?
Can we do 4:30?
Wednesday, the 15th.
I'll be there whenever.
Wednesday, 8:15, what time?
You pick it.
I can't be here much earlier than 4:30.
Well, no.
Five o'clock?
They want it later, 5:00?
15.
5:00?
5:00's good, Wednesday.
Thank you.
I will make your entrance, somebody make a motion, and have a-
For what?
That we're gonna have a special meeting on Wednesday, 8:15, 5:00 P.M.
I move that we have a special meeting at 5:00 P.M. on Wednesday, August 15th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You'll have location.
I will, I'll send everybody, if this, if this room is not available, I will send everybody, you know, that we, because I know I can get the US community center.
And be sure that you send out, and you indicate that it is a special meeting, and that we may go into executive session.
Well, that's, that's, yeah. That is a special meeting, and that there will be a motion made to go into executive session. I told you, can't put on the agenda going into executive session, you gotta put down a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I should make you happy.
I have a question, just about the process, not because we can do anything about this for this time, but for the future. When you gave the information to Ira, did you assume that that was giving it to the commission, so that we would come here tonight and inform?
I thought that the, not necessarily Ira, but I thought the board, because I know you had a copy of that, the board had a copy, I knew it was supposed to be getting disseminated. I assumed that everybody had it. I didn't realize that this was shocking news to everybody. I know I sent a couple emails out about the positioning and where we're at, and, you know, what I was looking to do, but these things, I thought would have been distributed.
I love getting information in advance of a meeting, because it, you know, it just can do research and ask questions about it.
But, just like the commission reports, you know, I try to have them ready at the beginning of the week, the latest, or the end of the week before, depending on how the week falls into play.
So, that this doesn't happen again, do you prefer that he gives you the information, and you give it to the rest of us, or that he just give it to all of us at the same time?
No, I want the information company, just as we're not allowed to talk to his offices, I don't want his officers to talk to you.
You know, I mean, I think this is an odd circumstance.
Who's talking to you?
I really think this was an odd circumstance, because-
Because this was sent to the town board.
Well, again, and, you know, I could be wrong, I play a lawyer on TV, but reorganization of the police department falls under the purview of the police commission. Budgetary matters falls under the purview of the town board. It is my belief that they didn't have any right to call him to this table to talk about reorganization today. They should have talked to him about budget, and here's what we're looking to do, and here's how much-
I thought it was gonna be a joint meeting as well.
That's what, that's what I thought it was gonna be. Budgetary matters, yes, we're gonna pay for lieutenant, or no.
But, if it was, they were all prepared weeks ahead of them, and we weren't. And that was my question about dissemination of information.
Correct, because it-
It wasn't supposed, what it was supposed to be, like, I was told about this meeting, where they set it up, it was supposed to be, A, a joint meeting, not one that we sat out, and it was supposed to be a very simple meeting. They were supposed to be talking the budget, either, yes, we're gonna fund the lieutenant, or no, we're not gonna fund the lieutenant. The rest of this had no bearing on anything. This came up, and I don't know why it came up, and I had nothing to do, you know, this was something done by the supervisor.
Is there a reason why you didn't put this in your report to us, since it was on the agenda?
I had no idea that these didn't have us. I thought this was-
So, you would have.
So, was it an oversight on your part, or you don't think we should have had it ahead of time? Ira?
Huh? No, it was no oversight on my part. This was something sent to the town board, for them to make their decision, yea or nay. Had nothing to do with us. When I saw what was going on, and what was gonna happen, that's why I made copies for everybody and handed it out, so you at least would know what the town, have the same information the town board had. This was not sent, this was not permission, this was town board information, that the supervisor asked the chief to come up with, and he came up and sent it to her. Got a copy of it. It was supposed to be, not this whole thing about, it was just very simple, yea or nay. And that's why I'm so adamant about it. Has nothing to do with all it is, although the chief made a good presentation, it was a simple matter of, are you gonna give us the money to fund the lieutenant, or aren't you gonna give us the money to, because we have to then go and fill the other positions and see what's doing. This, this whole thing had nothing to do with us, it was strictly for the town board.
But, you had that, right?
Yeah, no, I got a copy of it.
So, that was my question, is if you as the chair have a copy of information, should we all have the benefit of having that information at the same time, so that we all have the same two weeks to look at it that you would?
It wasn't supposed to come up to the commission. It was a town board thing, the town board, I have a copy of it. It wasn't supposed to be to the commission, it was supposed to be to the town board. We got a copy, or I got a copy of it, right here, because the chief sent me a copy, or somebody sent me a copy. I got a copy of it.
I think, based on what happened, was we had that meeting where we met with the union, labor attorney, a couple of union members, Ira, myself, supervisor, we sat in a meeting, they asked me during that meeting to create this, I sent it to everybody that was involved in that. I thought it was, it was supposed to be sent out even, and this goes back almost a month ago, was when we had it. This has been done, that's why there's been changes, because since this was initially done, we had another person leave, then I recreated another form, and then somebody else said, "Well, I'm outta here at the end of the month," and then I created another one, and that's where we are.
But, there's no reason why we shouldn't have got it, it's a document that can be foiled by anyone. They handed it out to the public tonight, there was no reason for you to hold on to it. We could have had it for two weeks and say, "I don't want to read this and throw it away, it has to do with budget, I don't care." There's no reason why you held it, and I'm sure, I think that's-
Sure there is, sure there is.
There was no legal, ethical reason why you held it with-
Don't give me ethics crap. You're the guy who sat out there, who didn't know nothing, has been the chair for how many years, and asking questions that you had no idea of, so don't even give me that crap. But, the idea, no, get it, the idea was, this was something that was asked for by Susan, it was sent to Susan, I got a copy of it, had nothing to do with the commission. You don't like the fact that I didn't send it, do something.
But, it ends up being important, because Randall makes an excellent point, which is, I can't respond to your request, chief, as to the legitimacy of lieutenant's position, because I want Tom to take a look at this, that's legitimate.
Right, but this was not part, this was not part of the discussion, and I will say it 18 times until it sinks in, it was not part of the discussion, this was something for Susan to discuss with her board as to funding or not funding lieutenant's position.
And maybe you should have given it to him.
So, hold on, let me, okay, so let's, let's back up.
And then you would have had nothing.
Okay, so let's, okay, so let's back up.
You would have had nothing, and you would have been sitting here with nothing in your hands, because nobody would have known about it but Susan.
So, let's try, let's come at it, let's come at it from this way, what's done is It's on the agenda, and what this is, is this, what you, what's the chief's, is the chief's proposal for reorganization something else, or is it this?
That's it?
No, no, the whole ball of wax was what we have discussed, about moving this one, and moving that one, and recommending this one, and recommending that one. Everything hinged upon whether or not they were gonna fund the lieutenant.
Okay, can we-
Because they weren't gonna fund the lieutenant, then we, you know, we're not wasting it.
That ship has sailed, that belt has been wrong, it can't be unwrong. Can we, can we request that going forward, requests made by the board and of this nature, be simultaneously copied to all members of the commission, so that we, we all, particularly if it's something that you're gonna want us to make a decision about, I mean, is that fair? Does that sound fair to everybody?
I'm comfortable with that, or with Ira getting it and disseminating it.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter.
That's how, it was my understanding that, as you, as he had said, that just like, you don't go talking to our officers, I'm supposed to respond to Ira with this information, which, again, which I did based on our meetings. You know, I didn't, I was not aware that, whether he wanted it to be distributed prior to or not, I didn't know. I thought everybody was gonna have it, that was my interpretation, whether right or wrong. I thought everybody would have it.
No, no, this has nothing to do with you, it has to do with my decision that this was a town board matter, that this is what's gonna be for the town board, and it had nothing to do with the commission. Lieutenant has nothing to do with the commission.
I mean, it seems to me that anything that, any information that could help this commission make any decisions, or have the facts, even if it's just the facts that they have, even if it's their information, it should be disseminated, because it would be helpful.
No, Arianna, you're 100% right.
At the same time.
They, apparently, the town board got this tonight. Now, this was sent a while ago, for the purpose of disseminating it to the town board, and them sitting there and supposed to, you know, playing a game tonight, make a decision. But, they got it tonight.
Okay, well, if there's no point, there's no point in belaboring this particular issue.
Well, I think, after interviews, I think if you, if anybody is present or anything for the actual town board meeting where they're discussing it, and making their decision, I would just say that whatever decision that may be reached or thought of about who may be selected for a position is-
Take care of it.
Will be withheld until they make a decision, because you never want to say, "Oh, we want, we made a decision, this is the person," and then the board votes yea or nay, because it could look biased to a person, and so we just hold off on that decision.
That'll depend upon whether or not the members of this board, or the members that keep their executive session themselves. But, the point is that, I agree with you. It shouldn't, nothing should be said. I mean, I'm hoping Susan comes out of there and says they decided yes or no, then all of this becomes superfluous.
We didn't decide yes or no, but we decided to share our thoughts.
Share.
Is that why you're here?
Please, come on.
No, because the whole thing has to do with the fact that this was supposed to be a meeting where you just said yea or nay. Yes, we're gonna fund, or no, we're not gonna fund. Very simple decision that you spent two hours avoiding. So, perfectly, we'd love to hear what you have to say, and love to share your-
You've been wonderful, and I'm sure there, Ira.
I'm not usually in the middle chair, I usually walk up to the side.
Can we jump?
Yes.
As soon as Susan comes out.
Oh, okay.
Can we jump ahead and try and finish up, so that we can, once they talk, we go an executive session.
Somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn for minutes?
So, move.
Second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Okay. The, is the school contract details gonna be a big thing, or so?
No, I have a here, this here, a school contract. It's basically a repeat, the town attorney reviews it, the school district already signed it, there's three copies here, it needs to be discussed, reviewed by the commission for their signature, and then forwarded to the town for them to review and sign also to fully review it. It is exactly the same, I'll give it to you this way, you can review it, maybe make copies if need be, however you would normally do it.
I have to make copies, maybe we'll-
These are three originals that need to, to continue to be the original, so that all the signatures on it will be original. There's no change in it, except for dates, there's basically-
This will be some version that we'll leave.
There's four to six dates of coverage that we have, so it just needs to be approved.
Now, I'd like to discuss the possibility of sending a letter to the town board, asking the town board to please invite the town attorney to their meeting discussing the organization.
Didn't we do that already?
No, I put it on the agenda.
Oh.
We discussed doing it, but I wanna, I wanna send, I want the board to discuss actually sending a letter from the commission to the, to the town board, requesting that they consider having Joe Moriello, the town attorney, at the meeting that they're discussing reorganization, as, as a town attorney, as opposed to a labor attorney. I want to make sure that the rights of the citizens, the rights of the commission are protected, because he can sit there and say, "You can't do that, we should do that." Second. You know, I made a motion, I was discussing-
No.
Okay, you can, Becky, make it as a motion, and second by your opinion.
Now, it's open for discussion, huh?
Yeah.
I don't have any-
I'd like to say, it's like, I think it's really that the town board can decide who they want to and not want to, and it's, they're responsible to make sure-
That's right.
That they have legal counsel for things.
That's right.
Not for us to tell them what they should be doing.
I'm not saying tell them, Justin, what I said is, I'd like to send a letter requesting them to do it. I'm not telling anybody anything, particularly the town board, but I would like to send them a letter saying, "We think, as the commission, think it would be advisable, since you're talking about the rights and responsibilities of the commission in terms of the reorganization and everything, to have the attorney there." If you're gonna do it, that's fine with me, but somebody's gotta protect the rights of the commission, somebody's gotta protect the rights of the citizens, that you just don't say, "Well, we're gonna do A, B, and C, and that's it," and nobody's gonna be there, because remember, Mr. Walens is a labor attorney, he's not a, he's not a town attorney. He, you know, Mr. Moriello wrote most of this stuff, and he's more familiar with 150 than anybody else is.
I mean, I think it's a valid point. You know, I don't know whether or not it needs to be the, you know, a formal letter, I mean, perhaps it's a conversation that you have with the supervisor.
Or maybe when they come back in, we can mention it.
Yeah, we can do it.
Well, we have, we have.
We've mentioned to the supervisor and the supervisor, we talked about reorganization.
And, you know, but it is, I think it's important that there are, there's, there's a difference between labor law, and there's a difference between our existence as a commission as it relates to the state of New York, town law, village law, state law, that has absolutely nothing to do with labor law. And, I don't necessarily think that a labor lawyer is going to protect our existence as a commission, and have the full knowledge of the town and village and the state, you know, as it relates to how commissions are empowered and this, that, and the other. I mean, that's, that's my view of it. It's, it's, it's like asking a dentist to, to do an amniotic. You know, they all have their, their specialties.
I'm sorry. You always get words that.
Yeah, he has punchlines and, yeah, I love these things, that's right. So, we want to make a decision when she comes down.
I'm totally comfortable with that.
Does it make sense?
It makes perfect sense.
I mean, it's, it's like, you don't send a plumber to do a gravedigger's job. I mean, it's, 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 everybody has their area of expertise, and Joe Moriello wrote most of the laws for the commission's existence. Has nothing to do with your labor contract, or your police officer's contracts, and to talk, you know.
So, you're talking about restructuring, or are you talking about the restructuring or review of?
The whole reorganization thing that they're planning on, there are certain things that they, you know, that, can they do this? Can, you know, lieutenant is their responsibility, but reorganizing the sergeants is our responsibility. And that's, you know, they, they can't sit there, in my opinion, that's why I wanted Joe Moriello there, they can't sit there and say, we're going to reorganize the sergeants. Well, you can't do that, that's our domain. We're going to get rid of five officers. Well, you can't, that's within our domain. I'm not saying we will or won't do it, but, I mean, somebody's got to be there to say to, to say to the town board, and it can't be us.
Either they want it or they won't.
Exactly. It, it's very simple, which is why I don't understand why they're.
So, we're going to go ahead and suggest it.
We're going to suggest it, no letter, so I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, great. I feel exactly the same way about this commission voicing an opinion about the lieutenant's position. It would just, everything you just said could have applied to that conversation.
Hmm, really?
Pretty much.
Disagree, but that's okay. We can disagree.
Apparently, we can. Quite well.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that. Like I said, I just, I, 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 I mean, you know, you want to make a motion, that, that's fine, I'm just saying, I am adamantly opposed to doing the reorganization. It's not our responsibility.
Well, we're probably off that topic now. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So, you got to see the month report?
I have to.
Did we, did we do the school contract thing?
Uh, we're going to do it at the special meeting, I'm going to make copies for everybody, because the chief only had the one copy.
Well, there's three in there, but they're all original.
Yeah, so, and I'm, I'll make copies.
Don't pass them on.
I'll stop it tomorrow when I make the arrangements, and it's Carol, she always does it all, like, that's where I get all my copies done.
I didn't want to make copies of that to give out.
So, how are we going to get the copies? Wouldn't it be easier for you to scan and email them?
I could, I just, yeah.
You'd like that, Ariadne.
I didn't want to put in a report.
Uh-huh. You can actually read them before.
Only make copies before you leave.
I was just saying, we'll read them before.
Or else you're going to have to mail to paperless.
Can we make a copy before we leave?
Huh?
You can make a copy before we leave and hand them out.
There's nobody in New York.
Well, they're still here, because they're going to come back and talk to us.
Yeah, I don't see any lights in there.
I think they went out the back door.
Do you see any lights? I'm going to go see, you can, you can talk about the month report.
Well, yeah.
Call the Irish goodbye.
Do that.
For the commendation letter I have, I have one, and it's not necessarily a commendation, but I thought it, it is, in a sense that it was in the paper for our assisting Platakill on escaped prisoner, Rex, K-9 Rex and Officer Bobby Knuth, they were on duty working when, when Platakill called with a escaped prisoner, at time of arraignment, the person had bail placed on him, didn't like the bail apparently, and fled.
Do you have your code?
R-K-9, along with Bobby Knuth, responded to the area, did a track, and within 30 to 40 minutes, as it says here, did locate the subject. I just, you know, one, it goes in with great cooperation with us and the other agencies, and it just shows the great ability of R-K-9 Rex. So, I included that in the, that letter.
David?
Yeah.
I'm going to ask you for a favor. You have a scanner sent, don't you?
I have a scanner, yes.
On the computer, maybe you could take one of these copies, scan it, send it to the...
Do you have a highlighter?
A highlighter? You can't write on this?
That's why I said, if you gave me a highlighter and a copy, the yellow doesn't come through on the numbers.
What yellow?
From a highlighter. Oh, this has the chief's.
This is original, very cheap.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, never mind.
I just had a question about the meetings attended, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask you.
No, I think it is, actually, because that actually reminded me.
You met with Jeff Logan, and since he's a town board member, I just didn't know if it was okay to ask what you were meeting with the town board member.
We, we were, we were talking about budgets, operations, just he had some questions, and we were just going over some of the things of my thoughts on, you know, just this year's budget, and, you know, the things that he's thinking and I'm thinking, it was just one of those type things, so it wasn't a, no decisions out of it or anything. It was kind of.
Sort of a fact finding issue for the town board?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He was representing the town board in that, or he just?
Well, as a board member, he came in, that occurs on occasions where one will come in and ask some questions about things they don't know, or don't understand, and we will sit down and we'll talk about what they are. So, that does happen on occasion. I list them on these, just so you're aware.
And was that in response to this stuff we were looking at today?
Uh, some, not, not all. For example, we also talked again about his thoughts of going to a countywide dispatch, as he brings up every now and then. You know, we actually are going to have some meetings, we are going to meet to discuss some of his thoughts, I'm going to look into some ideas of how the sheriff's department, what they charge for when they cover for another agency, and these are questions that they have brought up over the years, and he was supposed to come in and sit down with me and go over this stuff, but has never showed up before. So, as we were discussing, you know, we said, because we always say, we always wait till a position comes available before, you know, and then when it's time to backfill, it's like, hold off, we want to change the world. I said, and you can't do that, you have to plan ahead. So, it's kind of just a informational sharing, fact finding opportunity.
But are we holding off on the hiring of the full-time dispatcher for now? I mean, you haven't discussed doing interviews.
We haven't discussed it, I mean, we, we need to discuss that.
Yeah, doing interviews, that may be a, it may, it may be advisable to add that to our interviews, because you can't.
That's a civil service position.
We have, it's a civil service position, it's a full-time position, and again, this is going to fall back on the town board, if they're going to say, we don't want you hiring, but, you know, because of the money end of it. The money is budgeted for this year, so.
What line is that?
The dispatcher.
Yeah. Which shift is it, that is going?
Well, the shift that is, Charlie, who's retiring, he did a B-C rotation. The A-line dispatcher wants to stay on A-lines, you know, so he's going to be staying, so whoever it is will go into that rotation.
When did you hear that person in the interview?
Well, there's several people, there's a county list we have to go by, there's a, so we'll have three, four, five.
Because that decision.
Potentially, potentially six people to interview.
We, that decision we can make right then and there.
Are some of them are part-timers?
I'm sorry, no, these are all for a full-time position.
Okay, but none of them are currently are part-timers?
Correct.
That are?
Nobody.
There's no ineligible?
No. There are some people on the, on the list that are certified, that have been working as dispatchers. You know, we have one person with 100, one or two people with a 95, I think, one maybe, and then three with a 90.
Are they, we have residents?
No residents, there's no residents list, that is just sort of the county list.
My only reluctance, and there's always an only reluctance, is that I become afraid that we hire people, and the town decides to do something, and we've taken a person who has made life decisions based on something short-term, or something that could be short-term, and then that person is devastated by something that's, that, that, that's, that's my reluctance to, like, rushing to do any of this. It's not about not giving you the, the bodies that you need.
Maybe share with them that, you know, this position, you know, is being looked at by the, the board. If a position were to be eliminated like that, if the board said, you know what, we're not funding that next year, they would then go back on the list and be what they call the next one available to be hired. You know, depending on the.
I don't know if we would.
Did we do that before?
Yes, we've done that before. We did that before with an officer, because we didn't know whether they were going to fund that position, so we said, you're hiring, but we have to be honest with you, we don't know if this is going to last past, you know, the end of the year. At least they're aware, and they can turn around and say, because, you know, they have nothing to lose by taking it, if they're not working now. And I, I don't want to, you know, I, you know, Randall's 100% right, but he's saying, we can't not fill anything because we're afraid, that's what, but we've done that before, Randall.
It's difficult, it's a difficult position. And, you know, and I understand that.
Refresh, sorry.
No, that's good, please.
Refresh my memory. Where are we at with full-time officers? And where you want to be?
For, we have 22, counting myself, right now. We had 23, we're down to 22. With Gary leaving, and if they, all again, not replacing that, we'll be down to 21, where we were several years back. The, the issue, honestly, is that we have, we're going to have three openings at least, if we were to go back to 22. The problem is that the county list, you know, where, the resident, the residential list is exhausted. The county list that we would look at, I honestly don't know who the top three people would be, we'd have to solicit from the county to get that list. If that list is, that people at the top of the list that would have to be selected aren't certified, they have to be sent to the academy and everything else, is a big expense, there's.
Six months of training.
Yeah, and, and, and my, my thought on it is that, you know, I know there's another list coming out too, so that's why I say, potentially, we're not going to be able to fill all these positions. So, that's why I say, we make the moves, and then we see how the budget comes, and if they say, don't hire one, or whatever, then we make a, a decision on where we're at, based on the budget.
Is there a timeline when the next list will be valid?
Uh, well.
And is that out of the sergeant's list as well?
Sergeant list, we're, will be coming out any day. We still have a valid list, that's good for 60 days, the other one will be coming out probably within a couple of weeks. Realistically, we're going to have some movement, and, and some younger people taking, you know, the, the reins. And that's how we train and, and move our people on. You know, we're not all going to be here forever, so we need to train our people. And, you know, the last movement we did for the sergeant's position, he's already certified through supervisor school, so we don't have to worry about that. Any additional people coming up, I think they need to go to supervisor school. So.
And that's two weeks?
Two weeks, yeah. I believe two weeks, I don't think it went to three, I'm not sure.
Okay, so you'll add that to the.
So, if, if you're ready for that, I'll have them in for the interviews too.
Let's do it. The interview for dispatches is not major, it's a, you know.
There's just a lot, there's just a lot of people interviewed.
Yeah, but you know, you're talking maybe 10 minutes each, I'm not really talking about a lot of time for dispatches.
So, you want to fill sergeant's position before we start talking detective position?
I, I think it's important to, because it can change the dynamics of, again, the really, the important thing is the lieutenant's position first, because once we have an idea of who's going to take that position, it could change a lot of things of placement. Then, we're talking about the detective position, but if I put out the detective position now, we may appoint somebody to detective division that may become sergeant, and to do that within a few weeks, it's just.
Waste.
We really can't do that.
Great.
And the other thing is that you point, I thought you were pointing out about the executive session meeting with the town board.
Oh, I didn't even notice.
That was one I wanted to ask. That had to do with the, the complaint that came in in regards to my action, that a member came in and inquired whether I did proper procedure.
They got the email about that.
Right. Whether I did proper procedure in auctioning off department cars. They went to the commission, which went to the town board for review, with the town attorney as well. After their investigation, they have indicated that I did follow procedure, I didn't do anything wrong. There were some things on the board's level that they should have done that they didn't over, you know, for whatever reason, but there was no wrongdoing or anything illegal that I did, so I just wanted to bring that out, seeing that it was brought out in a public hearing from a resident, indicating that it was questionable.
Another thing regards to training, Joe Judge did physical fitness instructor course?
Yes.
Is that to help supplement at the police academy?
No, he's a, for in-house. And we have our own detective, I'm sorry, defensive tactics, and he is a defensive tactics person now, so he does our, along with Butler. Gary Thompson was our other defensive tactic constructor, who just retired. You always need to keep at least two on hand in an agency to help each other, plus be able to fill in when the other one's not available.
And who is in charge of the academy now?
Uh, Alan Round.
And he's a Kingston?
He's a sheriff.
Okay.
Yeah, sergeant with sheriff's office.
Okay, before we consider a motion for executive session, I'd like to ask the.
Want defensive actions?
No. Gene likes to, doesn't like, you know. Gene, are you, are you authorized to give us the opinions of your executive session, as we were told we were going to get from Susan, when, what's his name came out?
Kevin.
Kevin, Kevin came out and said Susan was going to share with us your perspective as to that, what went on in that.
She's not the spokesperson.
Because, you know, this, this, you know, Gene, this was supposed to be a yea or nay on funding the lieutenant's position. We're just sitting here trying to figure out what was going on, and what's his name said, that Susan would tell us, but you guys snuck out. So, if you can't tell us, that's okay, I just didn't want to do that before we go into executive session.
He was going to share some thoughts, is what he actually said.
Yeah, is Kevin, are Kevin and Susan still here?
Kevin is gone.
Kevin is gone.
Susan is here.
Oh, okay. Okay, so we'll wait for Susan then, because basically, that's, you know, we're at a standstill here without knowing what you guys are doing. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, now.
I'm not compromised.
Defensive, huh?
Oh, she's here.
Did you see that? Oh, good.
You guys want me?
Yeah, you.
Why me, you have Gene.
She, she, she deferred to you.
I have to call my mother.
All right, then we'll, we'll do, let's do defensive action, and then we'll get an update from the supervisor.
Okay, we had four defensive actions for the month. The first one involved three reports filed for the single action, it was an MHL. Officers had an individual that was in the second floor apartment, threatening to harm himself. Three different, it's a, I'm sorry, a white male, 19 years of age, six foot, 150 pounds, and he is a SUNY student as well. The, the first one that was used was indicated for personal weapons, while covering the individual with the taser, as they took him into custody, he held the individual down and in place. Second individual, the second officer, again, along the same person for the same incident. And also, what I left out in the first one is that the subject threatened that he had a gun at, at the onset of this call, and wanted not, you know, to harm himself and kill himself. Second person stood by with a non-lethal shotgun, but did not deploy it, but it was ready to, to be used if needed. And the third officer on the scene used pain compliance with an R-bar and wrist lock at the time of handcuffing the individual when he was on the ground. There's no injury, the person was transported based on the MHL pickup. There's a lot of MHL calls this month. The next one was four reports filed for the same incident. We responded for a suicided male, again, had access to weapons in the house and guns in the house. The, the three reports are indicating that officers had their AR-15 removed from the vehicle, in ready position. The fourth officer, again, used the shotgun with less lethal, nothing was needed, subject came out and gave himself up to be.
Excuse, I'm sorry, this is the same person?
No, no, this is the second one. This is a different individual. Oh, this is a.
Is the name the same?
No, no, the first three are for one report.
Okay.
Then you have four more that are another subject, so 53-year-old, white male, 6'2", 250 pounds, large build.
Okay, so this, this person has three.
Yeah, next one has four.
Okay.
Again, it's just because when you have cover on a situation where somebody's supposed to have a weapon or a gun, you need to be ready in case the person does. Correct. And, and we write, even though it's not an actual force, it demonstrates force, you know, if somebody's driving by, they see a weapon drawn, we do this with handguns also, with felony stuff, you know, we always rewrite it up. The next one is another MHL, 37-year-old male, white, 6'2", 250 pounds, large build. Subject was in the area of local transportation location, giving some civilians a hard time, swearing and acting out in a violent manner. Officers attempted to take him into custody for transport for MHL. He began to struggle, pepper spray was deployed to the individual, at which time we were Pepper spray was deployed to the individual, at which time we were able to handcuff and secure him. This individual being the husky large build that he was, we actually needed two sets of handcuffs in order to accomplish the goal. He was decontaminated and transported by the ambulance for the MHL, no injury. And the last one had to do with the escaped prisoner that we discussed in the press release. At the time, officer took the subject, white male, 18 years of age, 5'10", 172 pounds, medium build. The escapee, when he was located, the officer drew his sidearm and ordered the person to the ground and was able to handcuff him without incident.
I'd like to just make a comment. I like you are here looking at these reports saying you're deploying the LTLs.
I'm sorry?
But you're deploying the LTLs now as opposed to just, you know, the force. I was looking at that and saying, aha, you finally got the pink ones.
Yeah.
Pink ones are supposed to...
Last name is...
You're supposed to take the shotguns if they're took to the street.
Yes.
You need to make a peak so the people would know that you're deploying.
For the...
You also didn't load with your perch.
This was a press release that came from town of Platakill.
Oh, okay.
Or Platakill.
Okay.
And I indicated the spot with dual star where it talks about Arcanine that took the, located the subject that escaped.
We get paid, we don't get paid for that.
No, the officer was working, also at the time, so he just assisted.
Now with the supervising...
Do I pick them up? Well, no, no action was taken.
Oh, no, because you told that you would give us your input from the meeting.
Well, we actually went in to talk about actually negotiations.
Okay, I'm just saying that's good.
Yeah, no, that was negotiations and of course, all of, all of, you know, everything that gets done in here potentially impact negotiations. So it was a generous conversation about where we thought negotiations would go and what we were going to try to accomplish and how each action is a reaction. And whatever, and nothing got decided because, A, for certain board members, this was the first time they saw the updated information from chief. And so they wanted to go back, some of the board members wanted to go back and sort of like really digest the numbers and really understand the impacts of every action and reaction type stuff. We'll sort of study the numbers and then sort of try to come back and talk more about what, how to implement what was being requested. So it was discussion, but again, it was all discussion relative to the impacts of negotiations and ultimately where we want the negotiations to go. So everybody's going to go back, ruminate on what was said tonight, look at some of the numbers, understand the numbers, see the impact that would have on the budget and...
When will you make a final decision about the lieutenant's position?
Well, I have it on agenda for next week.
So that means it'll be...
But I can't promise you that it will be next week. I mean, I'm going to follow it tomorrow with Bill to touch base about some things. I know the head of the union wants to talk to me tomorrow and wants to talk to Bill so we can get a little bit more feedback of some of his thoughts on some of the stuff that the chief has put together. And I think a decision could probably be made pretty quickly relative to lieutenant. But again, a lot of it depends on how it's going to impact negotiations. So, you know, I don't think we're going to have to have a lot more conversation, but nobody was willing to take action tonight because some of the information that was given, you know, certain people wanted to go back and look at it and then make sure that they're making the right choice.
Is there any relevance to the commission's opinion on that? We just weren't sure.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, obviously, I think people wouldn't have asked for some of your opinions tonight if there wasn't relevance, if there wasn't, you know, interest in what you guys were thinking. And that was partly why when Kitty, someone asked, I wanted to make sure that Kitty understood you guys didn't have an opportunity to talk amongst yourselves what you wanted and stuff. So sure, if you would like to share with us your thinking right now, then Gene and I can take that back to the board to sort of say, what are you guys thinking?
We're not of a collective mind, it doesn't seem quite this very second.
So would you like to share us what you were thinking?
Well, we weren't even, we weren't even certain as to how relevant that was, if you're just going to do whatever you're going to do no matter what. Or if our opinion mattered, or if this was purely economic and contractual and that was it.
I think your opinion of course matters.
That's a nice thing to say, but really?
No, no, well, okay, I'll just step back and say that I don't know if we're completely in consensus either, okay? And so that's why I think a decision wasn't made, because I don't think we are completely in consensus. Do, I think some of the impacts of where we go are definitely economic, because nothing can be done without the economic impact. I think there's got to be some conversations with possibly the commission and you guys in terms of, I think in some ways, our perspective is if we can get to reductions in the police budget and every other department's budget to a way to make us be able to deliver budget next year to the taxpayers at work, you know, if there's reductions that can be found outside of the staffing and personnel, that maybe we won't be forced to make certain choices with personnel because we can find savings of other places. So in terms of wanting to see that 10% budget, you know, in terms of what would be delivered in a 10% budget and how that affects manpower, was probably about the only thing that was somewhat consensus from the board was that, you know, trying to see a 10% reduction and hoping that in some ways you've already got to 5% through shrinkage, that if there were other ways to find reductions in the police budget that didn't affect manpower, that that would probably impact our decision on manpower, you know? And so that's why I think part of it, we couldn't make that determination, because if savings couldn't be found outside of personnel, then we have to go back and really relook at it and really talk again about where we want to make the impact kind of stuff. So it was sort of like the hope that maybe there might be ways to find some more money in that budget that will create savings, that could allow us to, someone keep the police department intact, but feel like we're finding savings to deliver a budget that will work for the whole town. And so that was, I guess, pretty much, that's the way I can explain the thinking.
Well, you know, one of the things that I can tell you is that when the chief, Ira and I sat down to look at the budget last year, we did, we went through it with a really fine tooth.
And this board is more willing, and this board is more willing to listen to what we came up with?
Okay, we came up, well, but we were, you know, we were told this year that the budget is not our responsibility. We don't, so we don't, we're not going to get into that.
Yes and no, 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 yes and no. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I mean, the way the budget process technically works, okay, from a purely structural point of view, the department heads give the budget, they're recommended budget to me, what they'd like to see. But at the end of the day, I'm the one who puts together the budget, hopefully with my finance person right next to me helping me, okay? And then we put together the budget and then we bring it back to everybody and say, this is what we're recommending. And then the board then vets the budget and decides how they want to handle it, and then you've got to get three votes to do whatever. I would not say that I'm not interested in what we're thinking and what you feel would be like to see and how you think you can deliver the best budget to meet the needs of this town. And so I would love for you guys to give us what your thinking is and stuff, and we welcome it.
Well, I think you and Kevin were on, you were on track when you, Kevin recognized, and it was one of the things that we've said, that, you know, there might be a $4 million budget attached to the police department. But of that $4 million, half of that is the personnel expense that he does not control. The rest of it is building and rent and lights and, you know, I mean, so there, and equipment and things. So, I mean, you know, the, when we looked last year, we didn't even, I mean, the only place we could look was on those things that, you know, that he could say, okay, we're not going to, I mean, we got down to, okay, we're not going to get this carpet. I mean, that's how hard we looked at things. And we did manage to find, what was it, the $70,000 for, in the health insurance. I mean, that's how hard we were, we were looking at things that we had no business looking at, trying to come up with.
I mean, some changes to us, that's a very big part of, you know, in terms of where we're going with the health insurance, in terms of where is our opportunity to reduce costs from a health insurance perspective that helps reduce the overall budget for everybody and everything. But then again, if we decide to go to a new health insurance paradigm, again, it's got to be negotiated with the unions. And so, you know, will we be successful with showing savings in health insurance? Well, again, it's not necessarily just up to us, it's also relative to negotiations, what we're going to be able to get out of negotiations. Now, if we could sit down and say that we can find a lot of savings in health insurance, because we're going to go to a new paradigm, and say to the police department, look, you know, we have to find money somewhere. And instead of you losing officers, you need to come to the table and work with us on health insurance. But again, we're not in complete control of that too. So one of the conversations relative to what we're bringing up was that even though we're finding incredible savings from quote shrinkage and stuff, at the end of the day, we're still going to be paying for all these officers who retired, we're going to still be paying the health insurance, we're going to be paying the retirement. So we'll be really seeing these savings, because we're going to see the savings on this piece of paper, but we're not going to see the savings on another line in the budget. And so again, it's an overall budget that we still have to pay to the taxpayers with a 2% cap and rising costs, you know, retirement and all that kind of stuff. So again, it's that bigger picture of how do you balance all of these needs against all of those other things you're talking about? And then of course, everything you do impacts negotiation. And so, you know, part of it was a conversation of every step that we take in a way, how will that help with the negotiations in terms of it being a more friendly negotiation to accomplish what we all need versus an adversarial negotiation where we're just fighting with each other? So it's like that bigger conversation of how do we all get to where we need to go? Which was like, you know, what you had said, or somebody had said, you know, if we're going to have a police department, we have to have a police department. If we're going to be willing to have a police department in New Pauls, how do we deliver a police department that provides what the town needs, that we don't create liability, but we also still have to deliver a budget that people can afford to live in New Pauls? So nothing's really ever that simple, which is why we made our decision tonight.
If I could ask, I thought something about 10% was mentioned. About 10%. If you're looking for a 10% reduction, would that be on top of lieutenant's position if eliminated? Or would that be included in the thought process?
Well, right now, we do, right now, the way we looked at it, okay, was for the moment, it, I guess the net result at the end was we're already being given a budget that shows a 5% reduction. Okay, so if we were able to get to the 10% reduction, other ways, maybe we wouldn't be forced to make a choice, you know, in terms of that. You know, so part of it was, could we find other ways to save money without having to go to getting rid of a lieutenant, getting rid of a sergeant, getting rid of a, you know, a police officer type of thing? So the conversation went a little bit beyond, you know, I mean, fortunately in a way, because of the retirements, because of everything that's going down, because we've been able to see savings from just the sheer nature of what's happening with the department, it's put us in a position to be able to sort of say, okay, for the moment, if we step back and sort of say, we already found 5%, could we find some more money elsewhere without having to touch the manpower? That might be a way for us to be able to make a decision, you know? And so that was...
But those, the, am I hearing correctly, the 5% that you see now is a result of the losses that you've sustained?
No, 5% right now is by the sheer fact that the budget that the chief has given us tonight.
With the personnel.
The personnel, whatever. He presented us a budget, all of us, a budget that keeps the police department completely intact as of now, but still reduce, with a reduced cost of 5% because of what the chief told me is called shrinkage.
That's not only though, I mean, that is a big portion of it because of salaries.
Right.
But the other part of that is also what I have reduced in the budget line that I do control.
That you reduced what?
In the budget part that I do control with expenditures, I did reduce that as well. So it's not just salaries. There's other things in the budget besides salaries I did reduce. As far as cars, I don't...
We didn't, we didn't understand that, because we thought that from your numbers tonight, we thought, well, you were right.
That's not just salaries.
I don't think we understood that. I think we thought that that 5% reduction was just the salaries and the shrinkage and everything. And so therefore, we thought that we were already starting with...
Yeah, salaries are probably somewhere in the ballpark of $90,000, $85,000. There's an additional, maybe $20,000 or so that are reductions in the budget.
So let me ask this question. From my experience in working on the budget, if the 5% includes the shrinkage, meaning the attrition of people, though it's not attrition because you're seeking to fill them.
The shrinkage is.
Are you saying then there is nothing left in that that you can control, that you can foresee cutting anymore from? You know what I mean? What I'm hearing is you're at the bone, you're where we were last year when we walked in with, what was it, $70,000 or whatever?
Yeah, I think where we're at now, if we're to reduce, if we're looking for another 5%, is a position. Potentially Arcanine, the motorcycle, things of that nature, the bike patrol, which we don't have manpower to use anyway. But, you know, they are the type of things that are next up to go.
So Susan, you're looking for more, you're also looking at breakage, which is the person who retires, you've got to put their costs of health insurance against a new hire. Throw that health insurance on top of their salary and see, is there any, where's the savings? How much is the savings?
See, that's part of the problem, is the way that it was sort of somewhat brought up is that, you know, you could look at this and say, well, we're saving here, here and here. But at the end of the day, you're not really saving as much as you think, because there's other costs that now are being shifted to another line that we still have to find money to cover. So, you know, that's exact, yeah. I mean, so in a way, what was brought up tonight was that, yes, we're sort of seeing savings, but are we really seeing savings on another end?
It's immediate almost, temporary? And then as time goes on and...
Well, you're not seeing it across the board.
Right.
You're seeing it in one section. So even though you are replacing it with a body at a lower cost factor, you still have, now you have two people in health insurance instead of one.
Well, and you know what? And I, and as you raised that conversation, we sat here to talk about, you know, what we should be doing with these spots, knowing the predicament. And he's in a bind. Not he, the chief, well, you know, the chief's in a bind. But, you know, my fear, and I said it earlier, was that, you know, I'm fearful of moving forward to fill these positions. And we sort of kind of got, took care of that, because they said, oh, we'll let people know that they're going to, you know, that they may go away. You know, the position, you know, we'll hire you, but the position may go away, you know, at the end of the year, which is fine. So they take the job with that full knowledge. But perhaps it might ham, you know, hamper you, would it, does it hamper you in any way if we move forward with what he needs? While you're do, or, I mean, if you were to give, let me ask you, I'm going to ask you for, I'm going to ask you for advice now. If, if, if he came to you and said, I need five, I need to fill these spots right now, because I'm up the creek without a paddle. And I came to you, let's say I was the chief, and I said, I need, would you tell me move ahead? Or would you tell me to hold off and wait?
Well, technically, in a way, we somewhat with the sergeant's position, you know, we did sort of say, go fill it, you know, right now, technically...
That's because it's contractually there, it has to be there.
Well, it's, it's contractually there and has to be there, but that doesn't mean that the certain board members that might have said, we don't care that it's contractually there, we still don't want to fill it, and we'll deal with it, you know, we'll deal with the consequences. A decision however, happened to be made however, to say, fill the position and we'll deal with it, okay? So that decision was made to fill the position, move forward, do what needs to be done to keep the police department running at the level that we somewhat need to do, in a sense. I mean, from what I heard tonight from the chief, he wants certain things filled, but he's willing to try and play with other things and not fill them right away and try to make things work, like see how the department can work without. You know, we haven't had Gary Thompson in for a long time. We haven't necessarily backed him to his position per se. And you sort of said tonight that you could go along, sort of trying to see how we can make things work without filling every single position. So you were already sort of saying you were somewhat doing that. I mean, for myself personally, we didn't talk about this tonight, but I know for myself, when we've been thinking about this whole process, it was the same thing. Well, in my mind, it's like, do we fill the lieutenant's position, saying to whoever gets it, well, you're getting it now, but at the end of the year, that position might not be there, because we can't fund it, but we get that with budget.
But can you do that with this, can you give a six-month con, I mean, can you give a short-term contract? I mean, you then open yourself...
I suspect you can do anything, it's up to the person if they want to accept it, you know?
Right, right.
You know, but I've sort of saw the same, I mean, I'm thinking the same line that you're going like, I mean, in some ways...
Maybe you want to take away promotion.
In some ways, again, we're being asked to make decisions and fill positions out of the context of the overall budget process. We still yet to get the annual report to tell us where last year netted out, what kind of shape we're in this year. So we still don't know last year. We're sitting here now, it's August. We saw them closed up last year, we don't know where we really are. We truly don't really know the legitimacy of the 2012 budget that was, we all know, not done appropriately, you know, invest, you know, whatever. So, and now we're being asked to sort of fill positions in a way to help the police department run as it needs to be. And we're operating in a vacuum of not knowing what the end result is going to be. So it's really impossible to answer any of these questions, so...
Yeah, well, we're struggling with it too. And I come down, you know, it's, it's always easy to add, it's hard to take away when it, when you get to a position.
Right, right.
Like this, but...
So, so some of those things, conversations happened, happened, but again, it was also in the context of how it will affect negotiations.
So you're in the same spot as we are. We don't know, because it's up in the air, everything's up in the air.
Yeah, it's, you know, but again, a lot of it for us was... Yeah, it's, you know, but again, a lot of it for us was, again, in the context of negotiation. And we probably still don't have all the answers because there's still conversations that have to happen. So, I mean, I think we sort of came out of it with like, well, before we make a decision, let me go back to the chief and to you guys and sort of say, is there any place in the budget that we can find other savings? Like now, one thing that came out of today's department head meeting, which will affect everybody in a way, was like, even like the chief today, sort of, we were talking about trucks, you know, and the chief's got his truck, and this person's got a truck, and that person's got a truck. And all of a sudden, it was like, well, maybe we don't need to all be buying these trucks, maybe we can buy one truck and then we can share the trucks. You know, so we were looking today as all the departments together, just, you know, as we go into this budget, was like, okay, don't just look at your budget alone, let's start to look at how we can take everybody's, like, everybody's gonna do their budget, they'll bring it back. And then we said, okay, once we get everybody's budget, maybe we take the equipment line and see all the equipment everybody wants. Then we bring everybody into the room and say, okay, you all need all this, now how do we condense it so we can buy less and we can share it? And then maybe we can make some changes in the budget after we get everything, what everybody wants, so we can change everybody's budget to find some savings for everybody in a way that works for everybody. And so, the goal is trying to see how we can collectively, or we can get it to try and deliver the services everybody needs without anybody feeling too much pain. But this is gonna be a process because we're just starting to take on, you know, the budget for next year. And so I think it's gonna be a process over a period of time, though how we meet the needs of the chief in a more immediate sense. Hopefully, we'll be able to figure this out pretty soon. But again, it was a lot to ask the board tonight to make a decision on when some of them were getting the numbers for the first time.
Okay, so now, let me, let me ask this question, and maybe the chief will like this one. I don't know how anybody else feels, but you know, I still come down on the side that perhaps doesn't need the lieutenant's spot. But that's me. He feels he needs to have this spot. Recognizing your quandary, is it problematic for the commission to ask if it would be appropriate in an effort to help ameliorate some of the mess that's going on there because he's short-staffed? If we could perhaps do a temporary second-in-command appointment? I mean, I don't even know if that's legal or-
Technically, he's, technically, he's already done that. Because he's technically put Luque Zee as second-in-command. So Luque Zee technically is acting as second-in-command, right?
But we, but, but what we want to be able, what he's asking us to do is to conduct interviews so that a decision can be made as it relates to that position. And I think perhaps so that there's some, A, continuity, and B, peace of mind and some rest other than you being-
I think it's a peace of mind in-house, but I think also with the interview process, they get their interview, understanding that the town board yet has not made a decision. At least if we do the interviews on Wednesday, you do your meeting on Thursday, hopefully a decision be made to replace the position, and then we can do that. If we wait till Thursday, then we hold interviews the following week, one of the individuals are gonna be away that, the next week, the following week, I'm gonna be away. Now we're into September before we can do interviews. At least we can get that all done and maybe have things in place prior to, or if you think that the town board is not gonna be ready.
What I would say was that I don't think there would be any problem with you doing interviews to process forward-
We agreed to do that.
-without any promises being made.
We, okay.
That's the way we made the motion.
That's what we agreed to do.
I think that would be, I mean, I think that's, I, I think we're proactive to try to move the process forward so we can take action, things can fall into place. But if it's done with the understanding that this decision's presumably made, or maybe possibly it is decided that the decision, you know, maybe the decision will be to fill positions temporarily with the understanding that once we go through the budget process, things might have to change because we don't know the outcome yet. You know, again, it's gonna be, everybody's gonna be, you know, it's funny, I went through this LIMs training yesterday, and the word that kept coming up was flexible. You know, like this whole emergency management thing, you know, through the federal government is dealing with emergencies, but there's flexibility in terms of how you react to these different emergencies. And I guess it's the only thing I could say here is the same thing, is that we all have to be flexible in the sense of, let's try to keep moving forward, doing what we have to do to make the department work as effectively and as efficiently as possible, with the understanding that we're all going to have to be flexible because we don't know at the end of the day what our budget status is and what we're gonna be really forced, what decisions we're gonna be forced to make.
Now, let me, let me, you know, I'm sorry to keep asking-
That's okay.
-other questions, but let me throw this one at you. Using the scenario that you, that you raised, if we make that, we move ahead and, and fill that lieutenant's position, and, you know, you come down the road, January, and we start a new year, and you said, we can't afford to do this. That lieutenant goes back into-
Sergeant.
-that sergeant's spot, right? So it's, it's, you lose that position, but you keep that body.
Maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Right?
But I feel I'm just the town board that appointed, that, that contract.
You do based on-
You do the contract, we do the, the, what's it say?
Interviewing and recommendation.
Interviewing and recommendations.
But that's not a hire, an interview and a recommendation.
No, 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 the board, the board's the one that actually hires.
We, let's say, we approve promotions and employees and commissioned officers, blah da blah. It says, we approve the promotions of employees and commissioned officers upon recommendation of chief who shall keep a complete service record of each member of the department in accordance with applicable civil service. So that's-
So you can interview and make a recommendation, but it is the town board-
You sign the con, their employment contract. If we, if we hire, if we say, go with this person, we send that to you, and you say, you know what, we don't like that person. Then you, we go back and make the chief buy 25 other people, and we win it down to, to whatever. It's, and it's, but it's the same thing with the chief. We do the interview and recommend, and if you don't like it, then you say, scram, we gotta go back and do it again. So, yeah. But I just wanted to make, I mean, make sure that you understand that if you get rid of that position and promote that position, we still have that body-
Right.
-once that position is eliminated. So there's, you know, there's no-
That person is losing job.
Right.
They get, they get knocked back down. Which is partly something, from my own perspective, that I would like to avoid happening, because I don't like that, but-
But losing, demoting them?
Yeah, demoting, yeah, I don't like that. I mean, I don't like to even have to create that scenario. But that might, you know, it might have to be done in a way that unfortunately is no choice. But to have to do it that way, that we hope that that won't happen. But you have to understand that, you know, if we make a promotion now, before we even know what, you know, the annual report is, and, you know, what our budget is, and what we're up against. I mean, we don't even know right now what kind of state aid we're gonna get or not get, kind of, you know, you know, so, you know, we don't even know what our revenue is next year, to understand how it's gonna offset the expenses and costs. So until we really get the true numbers, we can't really make any decisions. So we are operating in a way in a vacuum in a sense. So, you know, my feeling is we're all moving forward in a best faith effort to do the best that we can. But I don't think we're in a position right now to be able to make firm commitments because we have no financial numbers to tell us where we're at.
Susan, you know, if we didn't have retirements, you know, we'd be with us, it'd be, you know, so this isn't like, oh, we're going above and beyond what we budgeted. You know, we're staying within the budget just to be at retirements. And the problem that has always been is that we wait till the roof is falling off before we say, all right, we need to change it, rather than keeping things flowing. And, and I understand, I understand, you know, that we need to look at things. But instead of sitting there, coming up with a decision, you know, and unfortunately, the way it works is it gets put off for weeks, months. You know, I have somebody else that's gonna probably be leaving in another, next few weeks. And we're just, you know, we're crumbling. Now we have these events that we're supposed to do for parade details and stuff, and we don't have man-
I thought, I thought we were cutting parade details.
But these are ones that have been approved.
Right.
And we just can't. And, and that's what we're gonna have to do, is start just turning them down. You know, and not offering the, the road closures and stuff. If the town or the village wants to still do it, they're gonna have to go to state police or sheriff or, I don't know. But we are just, I mean, our situation right now is, is terrible. We don't have people to work towards. And it's, uh, it's just a bad situation.
Well, I mean, what I don't really understand for the moment is technically, okay, really for the moment, our really decision is lieutenant.
That's all we want to know.
And, I mean, in a way-
Just need you to say yes. That's all.
No, 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 but see, but see, no, but what I was gonna say is, if the chief has officers that are retiring that need to be replaced, it's technically not for us to tell you, you know, that, it's technically not our position to tell you, don't replace those positions. So, at the end of the day, he shouldn't necessarily have to be in the quandary that he's in about how he's gonna replace these positions.
He's not.
Well, it all has to do with movement, because I think that's your issue.
We're, we're doing a number of things on that special meeting, other than interviewing the lieutenant, interviewing for a position.
No, I understand, but I'm just trying to say-
It hinges on the lieutenant's position.
Right.
All the other, all those other positions?
Right.
Right, I understand that, but, but, yeah, but still, whatever needs you make, if you still need some bodies there that need to be replaced, the movement shouldn't impact the fact that you need more people on the street.
No, it's not going to. We're gonna move forward. The only thing that we were waiting for, that's-
But I'm just trying, I'm trying to answer what the chief's saying right now about the burden of the police department, and now they're behind the equal, and I'm sort of saying, I don't really-
What happens, you know, what happens when I, like, for example, we add a movement out of the detective division to the sergeant's position. I have to fill the detective position. If I do that interview, the person that applies for that may be applying for the next sergeant's position that, when the sergeant gets moved to lieutenant. So if I do that interview for detective, that person may go in detective division for two weeks, and now come back out on the road as a sergeant. That type of movement is what has to happen. We have a new offer that we put on, I have to put that person into a schedule. With these movements going on, and what happens is when you put somebody into a rotation, sometimes there's overtime involved because you have to work them four days in a week to get them into a rotation, depending on the need. If I do that now for the one person, then I have to do it when we move the B-line, and I wasn't gonna do it all at the same time if a decision was reached. If a decision's not reached, then I have to start doing these movements, knowing that, all right, I may pay overtime this week to put everybody in the schedule. And then if a movement's made in two weeks, I gotta put the bid out again for tours, people may be moving and jockeying around again, and it's more overtime. So it's just not an efficient way to do it financially or just for the members' hours.
See, I mean, unfortunately, in some ways, part of the problem, and it goes back, I think almost to something like Randall said in the Walgo, you're also going to wait, sort of presenting to the board, that here's all these openings, changes, or whatever. So you have certain people who believe, you know, here's an opportunity for the towns possibly do restructuring, that they don't get so much of an opportunity to do. And how, you know, so how can you make those decisions, you know?
That brings me to the point that I wanted to mention to you, because you fell right into it, a good segue. Commission would like you to consider, at your meeting, were you going to try to reorganize the police department, or whatever you wanted to call it?
Uh, we are not.
Well, whatever, well, I'm just saying that at that Thursday meeting, were you gonna decide?
I don't know. I mean, I put it on the agenda, just because I knew I, we were gonna make a decision tonight, I put it on the agenda, so it was on there.
But what the commission would appreciate you considering is that you have Joe Moriello there to make sure that it's all done within the law. In other words, you know, like you say, we have, and we've spoken to the chief, and we're talking to the chief about filling the positions and getting his people there, and that's why we're doing all these interviews on the thing. But if you're going to reorganize or however, and you're gonna say, well, we wanna get rid of the sergeants, I would like, or the commission would like somebody like Joe Moriello, who's an attorney, not a labor attorney, there. It's up to you to make sure that it's all done within the programs of the, of the law.
We asked some of those questions tonight in that meeting.
Huh?
We did ask that question. I specifically asked what you're getting at, okay, to the attorney tonight. And he did give us his opinion. And I probably will have another conversation with Joe, but that question was, I know exactly what your hesion that was asked.
And?
No, all, all I'm saying is that somebody should be sitting here so that if it, what-
I said, can't you wait a week?
No, but-
No, we did, no, no.
Now I know it, he's, he's on someone else.
I don't, I don't know if it's, I don't, the, the-
We can talk about this.
One of the things that I said, you know, the labor attorney has his area of expertise. And as we go through, you all thinking about what it is that you want the commission to do, or what powers you want the commission to exercise or not exercise, I think what he's asking is that he wants to make sure that a person who's written this law is familiar with what it is that you're asking about. It's, it's like asking, and I used the example once before, a dentist to do an appendectomy. He's a, he's a labor lawyer, but, but the powers of this commission do not rest under labor law, they rest with the, the town and this-
No, no, but he, but he, I'm just, he, he, let me put it to you this way. When we met to discuss, Ira, the chief, myself, about the roles we're responsible with, his commission, we met with the labor attorney, we did not meet with the town attorney.
Okay, 'cause I know that when we had questions about, for example, access of files-
I understand, I know, I understand that. But however, what you might not know is that the town attorney many a time calls the labor attorney to discuss with the labor attorney.
That's exactly what I was gonna tell you. They, 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 they conferred with-
I know, no, I know that, I'm very, very, I'm very, very well, very well aware of that. And there's many a time when we're with the labor attorney talking, that he will say, you really need to talk to Joe, he's the town attorney, and he can answer that question. I can't answer that question. So Bill's very aware of his area of expertise, and he's very aware when it comes time to say, you need to ask Joe, because he's the town attorney, unless he'll give you the answer to that. So, Joe and Bill are very good about working together to understand if they make both, if they're making the right decision and if, you know-
But would it streamline if they were both in the room at the same time when you're doing it, so that you don't have to go talk to-
No, no, whatever, no. Let me put it to you, Bill's on retain, and Joe will pay when time we call.
Gotcha. Say no call.
Very succinct.
Are we, are we ready to move forward for this meeting if you're gonna go over there?
But what I would actually like to ask though, because Randall made a comment, I mean, you're not, I mean, this, what's the consent and-
Do you want to give your input on how you feel about the lieutenant's position?
I mean, you said you don't want the lieutenant, but you're not in agreement. I mean, is there a majority?
We decided we're not going to take up that subject. This is, you decided not to take up that subject. The town board.
You did, so you did discuss it. You discussed it tonight. Randall Centralized discussed it, and you said-
We discussed moving ahead with-
We discussed moving ahead, but not making any type of recommendation. If you want, I can read, we can have, what's his name, read the motion.
I'd like us to make a recommendation. I have a different opinion from Randall's, but I haven't had a chance to really hear him talk about this, so mine could change. So, I, we, it's just a little bit too early for, for immediate, say what I think.
All right, the motion that we made, let her read it, it's easier than my trying to remember it.
It's about forty-seven pages.
On the request of the chief, they can do interviews for the lieutenant position, but it does not mean they are supporting or not supporting the lieutenant position.
In other words, the feeling was that your responsibility, do, and then let us know what you want to do. Because this is, this, the lieutenant is your responsibility, everybody's angle on that comes under our responsibility. And that's what the decision was. Okay, can we, somebody make a motion, go into the second session?
For the purposes of, you're supposed to say why?
Hey, give me a second. I got, I got, I got my little paper that you gave me. For the purpose of, of, second, for the below enumerated purposes, in the medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person. And I would like to invite you to be here. You don't have to, but, you don't have to, but I think-